We installed for you. All right, we're finally gonna start here if I can dry off.
Your button is not on there.
We're gonna start here, now that I'm dry. We can begin, please, by invocation by Councilmember Shaw, followed by pledging allegiance to the flag, led by Mr. Cardoza, after we have roll call.
Mayor, Mayor Harris?
Here.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Espandola?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here. A stand. Dear only Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day, and we just thank you for the privilege that you've granted each of the five of us to represent the wonderful people of this city. Father, I just pray that you would just give us wisdom and clarity in everything that we do, making choices and decisions that are well beyond our years in wisdom, and for that, we give you all the glory and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. All right, is Brad Hudson out there? There he is, right there. We're gonna do a 4th of July Community Fireworks Show proclamation for Mr. Hudson.
Everybody knows your dead center, right?
Yep. You're special.
For the first time in 15 years, our community came together and hosted a regional 4th of July fireworks show. Marysville City Councilmember Brad Hudson took the lead in coordinating fundraising outreach efforts, contract discussions with the pyrotechnic company, and in securing insurance coverage, which facilitated the Community Fireworks Show coming to fruition. Thousands of families enjoy the free event with major contributions from Recology, here's to Recology, the Yuba Water Agency, City of Marysville, Sutter County, Yuba County, and City of Yuba City. This very successful event was organized in approximately six weeks, pretty remarkable, and included 2,300 different fireworks and brought our community together to celebrate our great nation. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend and thank Councilmember Brad Hudson for his significant leadership role in coordinating and re-establishment of a Community Fireworks Show in the Yuba City, Marysville area for July 4th, 2019, and to thank and recognize the involvement and support of many community members, local businesses, and local government employees for their role in making this year's event a reality and a success. You did a great job, we couldn't have done it without you. So, thank you very much. Would you like to say anything, Brad?
Thank you. I don't like speaking in front of people, even though it's my job. It wasn't just me. I just wanna thank everybody that helped out with that. You know, Mark was a humongous assistance and partner in the whole project, Yuba Water Agency, Recology, Sutter County, Yuba County, City of Marysville, Yuba City. And I'm just hoping that you all had a good time, because, like, go do it again. So, that's it. Thank you. There you are.
All right, thank you very much, Brad. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have a... The ink's kinda runny, but... Oh, hold on. Would the following people, please, come forward? This is for the 4th of July Children's Parade and Community Picnic, which was pretty awesome, too. It was really a great day. Bill and Candace, and I'm not the last one to mispronounce your last name, is it Lucic?
I did it.
I did it? All right. From Botanica. Corey Kersting, Yuba Sutter Symphony. Brittany Norris, from Yuba Sutter Recology. Michael Worth and Rusty, from Lowe's. Leslie Holland, Sam's Club. Stephanie Brown, from SOS. Amos Smith, The Cookie Tree. And Pam Allison, from Clean Right, Build Right. That's like a who's who of all the cool businesses in town, isn't it? It's pretty awesome. Pam, are you sure you wanna? That's a theme, man. It's a theme. It's a story we can't tell, though.
Last is important, right? Oh, sorry.
All right, the City of Yuba City rededicated a new flagpole at Pluma Street and Highway 20, conjunction with the 4th of July Children's Parade and Community Picnic. Since 2002, the parade has grown in size with more participation, and at the Community Picnic, there is live patriotic music from the Yuba Sutter Symphony. Many enjoy the free event with the contributions made from The Cookie Tree, Sam's Club, Clean Right, Build Right, Recology, Lowe's, Sutter Orchard Supply, and Botanica Landscaping. We want to thank you, also to the Yuba City Youth Commission, city employees from fire, parks and recreation, police and public works, who participated in making the day's event such a success, and it really was. Those of you who were there, it was pretty awesome. I think we have a new route, flagpole, a fountain, that was pretty legit. Anyway, now, therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend all of the individuals and businesses mentioned above, who have contributed to making the Yuba City 4th of July Pluma Street Flagpole rededication and the Children's Parade and Community Picnic such a rousing success. Thank you all very much. It was wonderful.
Would you like to smile?
Just give me a one, two, three.
All right, so...
Were you supposed to get three?
No, no, one's fine.
Okay. I have a couple extra. All right, picture.
I'm gonna smile on one, two, three.
All right, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. We'll see you next year. Now, we have a Friends of the Rodeo presentation, Nicole and Quincy Rosser.
By the way, your hair looks amazing. Just saying, I'm sorry. Hi, Jackie Silman, with the Friends of the Marysville Stampede. Mayor Harris, council members, thank you for allowing us a few minutes today to talk rodeo. One of the things we wanna talk about, this is our sixth year with the Friends of the Marysville Stampede. So, we got together six years ago, we said, how do we enhance that rodeo, which had been going for 80 years at that point, to bring more people down to Cotton Rossers Riverfront Park? So, of course, with the help of folks like Recology, and I'm really happy that they're here today, because six years ago, you stood there with me, and we really wanted to get involved. All the other sponsors, we couldn't do it without you. We just wanna say tonight, we've increased our attendance every year, so when we had to move away from Memorial Weekend, to move it into September, it probably was a blessing. We also do the Cowgirl Soraya, which is an event for women, nice little afternoon on a Friday, with a few little cocktails, and we've sold out, and this'll be our third year, third year, and we've sold out already. And all that money goes back into enhancing the experience of the rodeo. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole, and I'm gonna hand that.
And I'm gonna kinda go over what we have lined up for this year, and I'm not gonna go into any detail, I'm gonna let Wendy talk about Western Wednesdays, and Jackie mentioned the Cowgirl Soraya, which is on Friday, the 6th. The week of the rodeo, we've tried to have events leading up, so that everybody can hopefully get more community participation, leading up and get excited about the rodeo coming up. Sorry if I'm reaching every different way with him. So, we start off on Wednesday, the 11th, September 11th, with the Cattle Drive, and we're going to start it again at the Town Center by the Fountains on Pluma Street, and it will make its way over the bridge, down through the center of Marysville, and back and ending at Riverfront Park. It's the same route as we did last year, and we're providing some information to all of the council in there on the Cattle Drive route as well. And thank you, special thank you, to Yuba City Police Department for helping us facilitate that, because they're huge into being able to make that happen with the rolling street closures and what have you. So, we really appreciate you guys' assistance. The next day, Thursday, we have the Givekey Ford and the Chamber Business Staff After Hours Party and Rodeo Kickoff, and that's at 5:30 in the evening. Cattle Drive's also at 5:30, if I missed that. And then we also have a local team roping qualifier at Riverfront Park, the same night, at 5:30. And then Friday, we have the Kids Rodeo in the morning. Jackie might've touched on that a little bit, but we have five schools coming this year, about 2,000 kids, and that's free for them to come and experience a little bit about the western heritage, and hopefully get a highlight of what's going on. And then hopefully, they come back to the rodeo over the weekend. And then that night is Sod Busters with Marysville Rotary. And then Saturday and Sunday are the two days of the Stampede. Saturday is Military Appreciation Day, where all military and veterans get in for free, and that's at 5:00 PM. And Sunday is Tough Enough to Wear Pink Day, which is at 3:30 performance, and that's where we try to give a portion of the gate proceeds, as well as some other raffle proceeds and so forth, to Givekeys Carrying Women for a foundation, as well as the Cancer Center. In the last few years, I think, the last three years, we've given $10,000 each year back to those charities. So, with that, that's our lineup of events. I just... Sorry.
This is rodeo.
Quincy is here to entertain as well, because everybody else is out of town putting on rodeos elsewhere right now. So, on behalf of the Rosser family, I do want to thank the City of Yuba City for you guys' continued support. We greatly appreciate it. We're trying to make this a community event. It's very important for Cotton to continue this legacy. Locally, hopefully, we don't break too much before we leave. So, I will turn it over to Kelly.
I might have to get that back to you in a second.
I'm gonna be pretty boring compared to him. So, like Nicole said, we've tried to get the community more involved, and so last year, we started with the Cattle Drive, with inviting the local high schools, FFA department or groups, to come out and submit a float. And so, we had, last year, I think we had five high schools that did that, and then we had two bands, the Wheatland Band and the Wheatland High School Band, and the Yuba City High School Band, along the route as well. So, we intend to do that again this year. So far, we have commitment from Yuba City High School and River Valley High School, so I'm excited to have the Yuba City representation there. But it just provides a little bit more entertainment and community involvement for that, and then, of course, I hope you all can come on Thursday to Givekey Ford for our kickoff party.
And here's Wendy Zapata.
Hi, everybody. It is the most wonderful time of the year, always in this community. There's not a season that we aren't all giving. So, thank you to Recology for providing the buses once again for the schools. I know some other people have stepped up, but that's just amazing. Some of these kids, it's the only time they'll ever see a rodeo, and the magic and the memories are just, you know, I mean, it's unforgettable. I owe Mr. Vice Mayor over here, Manny Cardoza, big thank you for helping me get the word out on the window painting and the displays. I was on vacation, and he took it upon himself to go out and get a lot of people involved. So, what I just wanna talk about is, as you see out here, City Hall, the windows are painted rodeo-style. Small businesses really get involved to show their spirit, their western spirit, and do a display, or dust off their boots, and, you know, dress western on Wednesdays, and all of you can do the same. We've had some really good pictures and people, and a lot of new people are coming in and supporting the rodeo this year. Float Me is one. I can't wait to see what their window looks like. Hey, Jackie. Council, I have left you some rodeo stats with Terrell, and thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, how many years, did you say?
Eighty-six.
The rodeo's six this year.
So, it's not your first rodeo?
Yeah.
That was just way too easy.
I'm gonna speak, yeah, through the mayor.
I've already got thrashed with water.
Through the mayor, after your easy walk-in joke, I appreciate that. I think that this rodeo is just a fantastic, fantastic event, and having, seeing all the excitement about it, and so, having this impact, having this 86 years, is just, you know, legacy, right? Community to community, so, thank you for so much, and I think we're, hopefully, as a City Council, will be there, possibly. So, thank you. Thanks for encouraging us to be there so much. But I guess we'll figure out, what about tickets to get there? You know, how do people get tickets? If they just go online and...
Yeah, you just call the Cotton's Cowboy Corral, and they'll take care of you.
Okay, all right.
Very inexpensive for a pro rodeo.
Perfect. I'll be at attendance, not on the rodeo.
I know, it's all my friends that rodeo.
Yeah, it's like everyone left here. Thanks, Jackie.
All right, very well. We'll go on to number four, Leving Assessments for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number One. Looks like we have one recusal.
Mr. Mayor, I must recuse myself from this, as I live in that area.
All right. Welcome, Ben.
All right, thank you. That's a tough act to follow, a lot of information. What do I got here? So, tonight before you is in regards to continuing our, doing annual evaluation and continuing the assessment of the Land Landscape Maintenance Districts in the city. So, I have three items before you. The first one, we're gonna handle Zone One, and then we'll, due to potential conflicts of interest, we'll handle two through six, and then we'll go into the Residential Street Lighting Maintenance District. This is the second part of this annual process, to basically review the budgets, conduct a public hearing for the public, and then set the rate going forward, so we can put it on the tax roll for that. So, to kick this off with a little background, we're gonna start with Zone Benefit One, District One, Zone Benefits A and B. And so, this is one of our original districts, 1 and A, that particularly has to do with North Stabler area, up there, just to the northeast of, I guess, kinda the Jamie Road area, kinda that southeast quadrant, west of Highway 99, east of Stabler Lane, and then also 1B, which pretty much takes in that Shanghai Bend area and Garden Highway. And typical maintenance, really, that's a picture of what these do, is that each property owner is assessed, an annual assessment on their property tax, and it collects money, so we have funds for the city to manage the maintenance, the water costs, the pruning, damage to walls, ongoing cost for lighting, et cetera. And so, the big difference, so, we're gonna have a public hearing after I talk, and be happy to answer any questions. The big deal with this district that I wanna highlight, and that we talked about a little bit last time, is that it was set up without a COLA, without a cost of living adjustment. And so, what has happened over time is that, we only, if you look under the revenues, we're only bringing in, particularly for the 1B area, the Garden Highway area, this $65,802, it's this $29.50 per parcel per year, and it's been locked at that highest amount as far back as I could look. You know, in back 2008, '09, the city actually went out with a Prop 218 process to try to add a COLA and to adjust the rate, and it got denied at that time by the taxpayers. And so, with that, we've been subsidizing it, because you could see the revenue of $65,000 versus the expenditures of $125. And so, it's a, and with that, over the past, it's really been subsidized based on the basis that it's a gateway into the city, and so, we're trying to maintain that level of service with there being different options to basically cut back the service, or to maintain it at a lower level. And there's been real effort with the staff, with it hitting the general fund since the recession, and what can we do to turn off water, minimize maintenance, adjust spraying in different areas, the different costs, and over the last couple of years particularly, we've been proactive in trying to shut the water off for five months out of the year, and doing those different tasks to bring it down, but really, it's been tough with just the cost to hire stencil to pick up garbage and do minimal weeding, is pretty much at the same price as the revenue, it doesn't account material costs and administration. So, with that, I wanted to highlight that, just to know, to show that where that's at, and then over the next year, you know, either look at options where we're gonna come back to council, or adjust it through that year, through the budget, that we either continue to bring in general fund revenue, we look at options to reduce service, or we go out for another 218 process, where we look at different options on, maybe we don't go out for the COLA plus increase, it's just a COLA, some sort of way to try to bring that into alignment. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I recommend you conduct a public hearing, and then adopt a resolution confirming the annual budget.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. It is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing or seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, and we'll take any comment from the council.
Mr. Mayor, before you do, could we confirm with the city clerk that there has been no protest letters received in response to this particular item?
We certainly may.
None received.
Thank you very much.
On this one, or any of the others.
And thank you, sir. Any comment? All right.
Through the mayor, I do. So, if you were mentioning, Ben, if there were, if we did not approve the COLA, what would it look like in the maintenance of this in the future?
So, it's up to the property owners, through the Prop 218 process, to approve the COLA. And so, if the property owners decline that, then the maximum the city could set the rate is at that maximum that was established, which was $29.50 and $56.72 for those different districts. And so, councils, you know, a few options would be to reduce services, where you, you know, stop providing water or landscaping, trash services, turn off lights, maybe. These two districts don't have lights, but there would be options, basically reduce services, or you go out for another 218, ask for additional revenues, or you fund it with other revenue sources.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we need to adopt a resolution or not. Do I need a motion?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy assessments for the fiscal year 1920, Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, and that's the Maintenance District Number One, Stabler Lane and Garden Highway area.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? Thank you very much. Thank you, Frischa.
All right, next, we're gonna go to the same process, public hearing, levying assessments for lighting and landscape maintenance districts 2, 3, 4, and 5, which is the Town Center and 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting and Maintenance District Number Six, which is a commercial district. It appears myself and Councilmember Shaw will need to recuse, and Vice Mayor will carry the item forward.
Yes, sir, you are.
And so, Councilmember Boomgarden, what I just went through, and I'll hit a little of the keynotes, is that this is the second step in the process to establish annual assessments and continue the lighting and landscape districts within the City of Yuba City. And so, we just passed and confirmed District One, which did not have a COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment, that's based on the Consumer Price Index compared to these zones 2 through 6, which do have that COLA established in them. And so, when the city works, when the city looks at establishing the budgets annually, we look at past expenditures, we look at planned needs, if there's additional pruning, if there's water costs or streetlight costs, they're gonna go up, and then we also look at the reserve balance, and in an attempt to basically avoid swings. So, the cost of living adjustment raised the max levy potential amount of 1.5% from last year, but when we look at that by each district, we take those into consideration in the reserve balance to avoid a yo-yo effect, where one year, we did a lot of pruning, so we need to jump it up, and the next year, it goes down, so we try to minimize those swings. So, in the districts 2 through 6, as mentioned, it basically covers the 69 subdivisions spread out across the city. I think I have a bunch of maps here. They're really all over the city, and it's a city standard, basically, when you develop residential property in the city, that we put those parcels into a land landscape district to pay for that, street trees, street lighting, wall costs, and various landscape maintenance that benefit the subdivision. So, the average cost for 2 through 6, I wouldn't say an average cost, but we saw a price swing from where one area lowered $17 a year, to the highest area being charged $64 more a year, and that had to do with a small, typically where you see the highest adjustments, is when you have a small subdivision, where you don't spread the cost out quite as much, where it's burdened a little bit more than the typical 20 bucks or so that you would see for that district, for the rest of the districts. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I recommend that you confirm the assessment for fiscal year 1920. Have a public hearing and confirm that, those assessments amounts.
Okay. I'd like to call a public hearing for levy assessments of Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts 2, 3, 4, 5, Town Center, and 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City. The Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District Number Six, Commercial District, is now open. Is there any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue? Please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody like to speak? Okay, hearing, no further comment on this issue. I am closing the public hearing and bringing back the matter to the council.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, because there's a new council member in the council for this particular item, it wasn't present last time, I'd like to confirm with the city clerk again that there have been no protest letters received in this matter?
No protests.
Thank you. That means there's no majority protest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, action from council.
I have no questions.
No questions.
So, I motion that we adopt the resolution confirming the order annual levy assessments for the fiscal year 1920 for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, et cetera, in the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We're good. You're welcome.
Round three of the same thing. Public hearing, levying assessment for Yuba City Residential Street Light Maintenance District. Welcome back, Ben.
All right, so, very similar process, but now we're just talking streetlights and the power associated with them. So, these areas typically were developed in the county, where they were originally PG&E lights, and they were annexed into the city, and so, it's where the city is basically collecting revenue to pay the power bill annually. And so, we have two areas, we call the Teraboina area, and then one's the Walton Residential Street Light Maintenance District. And so, with those, we've been fighting this, the biggest thing we've been fighting over the last few years is there was a correction, where we're cruising along based on the power, the data that we were getting billed from PG&E, and there was a correction where all of a sudden, those lights were in the Walton area, or they corrected the billing, and so, they took the money that was basically going into that area, and now it charged a different area. And so, it'll play catch-up, that tapped into the reserves, and it basically threw this imbalance off, where now we have Teraboina, where we're lowering the costs in the Teraboina area, because over the years... the costs in the Terabuena area because over the years, we've been building up this huge reserve that we didn't know we had and overcharging technically because they were being charged, we thought they were being charged for power that they really weren't. And so there was this correction and then it brought the opposite into the Walton area. And so in order to handle that, we've basically gone to maximize the max levy in the Walton area to try to offset those expenditures and then re-catch up over time. Even though when I say it maximizes the expenditures, when you look at the district, typically you're still talking in that 12 to $20 range is what the adjustment is over the year. With a couple stands out, I think the highest one was a $67 annual increase, but the majority of those were a 12 to $20 increase for the year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, it's a recommendation to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the annual budget and order the annual levy and collection of assessment for the 1920 budget. And as Ms., as our city clerk has stated, there was no protest hearing, ballots received.
All right, thank you for that. Go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody would like to say anything, seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to council for a comment or a motion.
Through the mayor, make a motion, adopt resolution confirming the annual budget, ordering the annual levying collections of assessments for fiscal year 1920 for the Yuba City Residential Street Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Terabuena, and Residential Street Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Walton area.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None? Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Through the mayor.
I need to, I'd already closed it, never mind.
Ben, before you leave, if we got to do a Prop 218 for the one area to hopefully get some money, will you please add in the Happy Park area, the Walton and Bog Road area that they don't have anything set up at this time? Can we do that all at the same time by any chance?
We could definitely look into it and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Basically with kind of with a plan on how we do it and the dollar amounts and the request.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it. That way we get it all nice and great at all at the same time.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to item number seven, this is a public hearing to consider proposed 2018 and 19 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as CAEPER, for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, presented by Jaspreet. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jaspreet. I am the, sorry, excuse me. I am the administrative analyst with our Development Services Department and it is my pleasure to present to you the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAEPER. So what is the CAEPER? The CAEPER is a report that is required of jurisdictions that receive the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG Funds. Yuba City is an entitlement jurisdiction receiving a federal formula grant, which is based upon our population from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Renewal, which is also known as HUD. This program provides funding to expand economic opportunities and provide decent housing and suitable living environments for low and moderate income persons. So this is a report on our, the CDBG program for last year, that was beginning July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. And on the screen I have a breakdown of how the funds were allocated. So our housing program, public facilities and improvements, we allocated $422,501. For planning and administration, we allocated $130,000. And there is a 20% cap, which is regulated through HUD. And for public services, it was a 15% cap, so a total amount of $97,500. So we could allocate less, but we cannot allocate anymore for a total allocation of $650,001. So what did we do with these funds? We have our housing rehab activities. With our senior handman program, 14 low-income seniors received services to complete minor home repairs. This could be either light fixtures, toilets, as well as any bar grabs that they might need. The freed home repair program, 25 disabled residents received home improvements for accessibility. And continuing with our housing rehab activities, Habitat for Humanity Yuba Sutter Exterior Home Repair Program, we assisted two low-income disabled or senior citizens with exterior home repair services. This could be roofing, siding, or window replacement. And we have extended our contract with Habitat for Humanity until December 31st. They requested this extension due to assisting campfire evacuees. So they said by December 31st, they should be able to expend the remaining funds that they have. For the owner occupied housing rehab program, one low-income resident was assisted through this program and it is administered by the Regional Housing Authority. For public services, we work with the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. 1,889 persons experiencing temporary homelessness were provided support services. And they do partner with Bridges to Housing, Central Valley Homeless, Hands of Hope, and the Salvation Army. For public facilities, we do have our ADA improvements. This is an ongoing citywide project. An estimated 5,160 persons benefited thus far. We did do improvements at the senior center and we are now doing the ADA sidewalk and curb cuts throughout the three census tracts in the city. The San Brandon Pickleball Courts, estimated 3,095 persons benefited. This is using the census tract information. They did complete the project on budget, so that's amazing. And we did assist the River City Menorah and Kingwood Commons, 10 low-income rental units were assisted. So we did help with the window replacement and the roofing at Kingwood Commons. With our citizen participation plan, we do have a public outreach, so we are required to solicit feedback on the city's efforts and accomplishments. The 15-day public comment period was between August 5th, 2019 and August 19. We published a notice in the Appeal Democrat. It was posted on the city website and we did have the CAEPER available at city hall. To date, the city has received no comments on the CAEPER. So up above is our recommendation and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, we have a public hearing on that. We'll go ahead and open that. If anybody would like to talk on the CAEPER or the CDBG funds, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close that, bring it back to council for comment and/or action. Through the mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but I understand this might have been your first. You did very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive and made sense to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, thank you. Yeah, I think you did a really well job for putting it all together and your enthusiasm comes across really well.
Well, thank you very much.
So I just wanted to share that this particular item is one of those items that housing and homelessness is really important to our community. And the work that we've been doing with the CDBG has really done some impact, positive impact for housing rehabilitation, in particular with the 14 seniors that we've helped, right? And Habitat has been part of that partnership for many years. And then with the 25 individuals in disability, that is also another group of community members that we've been able to support and help and establish and will continue living here. So these are examples of housing prevention. These are really good examples of housing prevention. And so I like the fact that it's a private and a public business of work that we're doing together. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're on.
Okay. Through the mayor.
Yes.
Like to approve the CAEPER and resolution and authorized staff to submit all necessary documents to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
All right, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None? Thank you very much, Ann. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, moving on now to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We have, let's see, two written requests. One is Marnie Sanders. Next will be Mr. Jemerson. As far as written requests go.
Good evening, Mayor Harris, Vice Mayor Cardoza, and the council members. My name is Marnie Sanders. I'm the CEO of the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to come and publicly thank the city of Yuba City for all of the amazing support that you've given the chamber over the many years that we've been around. Your longstanding partnership is much, much appreciated. And I just wanted to point out too, you know, we moved, as many know, we've moved from Marysville back to Yuba City and we've been back at the Madden House just over a year now. And we want to thank you for giving us the ability to lease that building. It's proved to be a great location for us. And so again, I just wanted to publicly thank you again for your longstanding partnership with the chamber and to say that the chamber is doing really well. And we're building our programs and providing a lot of benefits to our members. And so again, on behalf of the board, the ambassadors, and our member businesses, thank you very much.
Through the mayor, Marnie.
(laughter)
I mentioned this to you this morning, but there's a certain positive vibe that seems to be emanating from the Chamber of Commerce. So I just wanted to state that publicly. And I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact new name of the program, but maybe you could talk a little bit about Lead Yuba Sutter. I think it's Leadership Yuba Sutter?
Leadership Yuba Sutter, yes. Yay, leadership. What used to be known as Lead Yuba Sutter is back after being gone for 10 years. And so, and it's back by popular demand. We've had a lot of folks in the community. There's, we have council members. Council member Boomgarden is actually an alumni of Lead Yuba Sutter, it was. So for those who don't know, Leadership Yuba Sutter is a nine-month program where participants who are accepted into the program get an opportunity to really take a deep dive into our community, get an understanding how government works here locally as well as statewide, get a peek into our agricultural community, education, healthcare, and the list goes on. And so we had a really difficult time because we had a lot of applications this year. And so it was really difficult for the committee. We have some committee members here tonight. Jackie Solomon's on the committee.[1393.15][1393.15](laughter) But we did, we chose 18 participants for this year. And so we are really, really excited. And we're kicking off on September 4th and then we have a retreat up at Shady Creek. And then monthly, we will focus on a particular subject matter. And so the first month is actually will be the history and culture of the Yuba Sutter region. So we're really excited about that. And we were supported by Sutter Health Foundation in bringing this program back. So we're grateful for that support as well.
Thanks for explaining that. It truly is good to see it back. And it has developed leaders that are currently involved in the community. And I think it's great that we have it again. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you.
All right. Are you coming?
Yeah.
All right.
Bernie wants to spill your water.
Yeah, put your water away.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I had no intent of throwing cold water on all of your passion and fervor for serving the community as you do. But thank you so very much. And council members, that's the reason I'm here this evening, as most people know, I show up often to cover subjects that I perhaps disagree with or have a different opinion, but I also come on a regular basis to thank all of you. And I'm thanking you this evening for everything that you've been doing, the work that's been ongoing, the problems you've been tackling, looking at a number of the issues that have gone on in the community for the past year that have been disturbing and taking on and tackling things in a way of revisiting them, addressing them. The ecology issue being one, the frac unit being another. I know you take a lot of, you know, hard knocks for some of the decisions you're doing, but you're doing it with the best interest of the community. It's really appreciated. I want to let you know from the people that I associate with, socialize with, et cetera, we're all very appreciative and we thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Rick. Anybody else from the public care to comment on the open comment period? Anything? All right. We will move on to consent calendar. We have, nothing requested to be polled unless we would like to do so at the last minute? Anything? Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, move and approve the consent calendar 10 through 14.
I need to back up. Is anybody from the public care to comment on anything in the consent calendar? No. With that, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. Thank you very much. On to general items. Number 15, Gauche Aquatic Park, Brad McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Let me repeat myself. Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director. At a special meeting we had, I am following up on council's directive to give us information on the, go ahead, thanks, five, our aquatic fee comparison with jurisdictions. I'll introduce Ann Gillan here in a second, our aquatic supervisor. Programming that can be offered throughout the year, year-round utilization of the complex, tracking of contracts, and then an update on our frac agreement. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Ann Gillan. She is our recreation supervisor. And she's a little nervous as well.
I just don't like this, but that's okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I am here to do an update of Gauche Aquatic Park pertaining to programming and stuff. Thank you. Okay, so I did a survey on 18 cities, including Yuba City. So all of the fee comparisons you'll see here are based on 18 cities, including us. Our public swim price per two and a half hour session, it gives all the cities and what is charged for a two and a half hour session, which is what we offer at the gap. As you can see, we are on the higher side of it. The average fee is $3.66 for every two and a half hour session and our fee is $5. Our group swim lessons, so it's the same. Some of them are the same as ours, eight lessons. Some of them, I'm not sure how many, but based on what we offer, and then the private lessons, the same. So what we, based on what we offer, an average free, average group lesson is $66. Our fee is 50. And an average fee private lesson is 172 and ours is 20. So we are on the lower end of our swim lessons. Our lap master swim, we do offer pretty much the same as most. A lot of, some don't offer lap swim at all. Those that do, we kind of, we have a monthly thing and a 10 visit pass as well as some of them. That's for lap and masters. So just a lap or lap swim person that comes in to just swim laps for exercise or a master that's in the master programs that actually is a little bit more competitive. Our water aerobics, most everybody does offer water aerobics. For the lap swim and masters and water aerobics, it's kind of hard to get an average because it's kind of different. Some offer eight classes, some offer 10. For the lap, what they offer their monthly fee for maybe are more hours than we offer for. So I do not have an average or anything for that. Birthday party rentals, not a lot offer birthday parties, but fortunately we are one of the ones that do. one of the ones that do. Private pool rentals, the same. Our junior lifeguard program. Twilight, now Twilight's kind of unique and not a lot of people offer Twilight, but fortunately, we are one of the ones. And what Twilight is, is we offer a nighttime swim from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the evenings on Saturdays. Tot time, same kind of thing. Not a lot of people offer it, but fortunately, we do. And it is a for zero to five-year-olds in our playground structure, in our no-depth entry pool and activity area. And that's on Friday mornings. Other programs offered, these are just kind of things that other cities offer. So there's not a lot of different things that we don't offer here, but there are some things that I'm looking into and stuff to try and see if we can offer here. So our year-round programming results, this was done, so this was a survey that was done through Survey Monkey. And we put it out to all of our participants in any recreation program. So we have an email blast that goes out in our active net program and it went to anybody that has ever registered for anything in our recreation. It could have been youth basketball, they're still going to get the, so it went out to thousands. We also put it on Facebook. So it was out on Facebook and so it ran for a week and we received 281 responses. One of the questions was, would you participate in swim lessons if they were held after school during the school year? And out of the 281, 197 people said that they would, which is 70%. So that's definitely a good thing. Which seasons would you participate in programs? Of course, the summer is going to be the highest. That's when people like to swim. But overall, a good average for all of them. Which timeframe would you attend water aerobics? The majority was evening and that is something that we don't offer right now, but is a possibility that we can get in. We do have our lunchtime right now aerobic class that's popular and the, speaking to the ones that are participating now, they enjoy the morning afternoon ones. What timeframe would you attend lap swim? The biggest percentage was in the evening from 5:00 to 8:00 and we do offer that. So that is something that we already offer and we do offer the lunch program or lunchtime as well. So evenings, we do offer that. So then, we're going to get into what we could possibly start offering. So from talking to people and from the fee comparison, a few of the programs became potential programs. I'm still looking over the survey that we did through the, what's that monkey thing I said? Survey Monkey. The survey, sorry. Survey Monkey. So I'm still going through all those. There's a lot of things in there that still could be possibilities, but just a few is our swim lessons. So instead of just having summer swim lessons is what we offer now, there's a possibility to have spring, summer, and fall. Maybe after school in the spring and fall. Lap and master swim, additional hours, offering maybe additional hours. And then, potential new programs, synchronized swim, float fit, aquaspin, water polo. Pretty sure everybody knows what synchronized swimming is, but float fit is a program where you, it's kind of like a water yoga on a float fit mat, but, or board really, or maybe you could use a paddleboard. It's just something like a yoga thing in the water on a float. Aquaspin is actually a spin class underwater, so bicycles underwater. And then, water polo. Additional programming at the gap. So hopefully, some of these things we can get going, like a part, maybe hopefully having a partnership with the chamber to host an open house at the gap so people can just come and see what we have and see everything, just kind of have an open house. A pumpkin hut, that hunt is a, kind of like a floating pumpkin patch where you get to go in and get, pick a pumpkin out of the water. So it's a swimming, you get to swim and you get to retrieve a pumpkin. Soggy dog days, with something maybe we could offer in our activity pool, the no-depth entry pool where you can bring your dogs. There's a lot of dogs that love water to come and play and maybe we could do that as the season comes to an end before we close up. Because we do shut down that area of the pool at some point. A mini triathlon, we have the water already. Hopefully, I'm going to be talking and hopefully we can get something maybe with the fairgrounds is right next door, maybe doing the run there, doing a run there and we have the pool. So different kind of options for that. New UBS City resident mailers, I have been checking into, there's a program where I can get mailers out to new UBS City residents. So it would just go to new residents in UBS City, the kind of little welcome package thing so they can learn about us as they move in. And then, a military appreciation day. Don't know what that looks like yet, but it would be nice to have something like that and maybe get that out there. And I think that's it for me. Hi, Mark.
Hi, Ann. Easy question.
Okay.
Kind of going back to opening the pool in the evenings. That seemed to be something that as we've traveled through this journey of helping the gap stay open, wouldn't be a winter thing, but what are the, what would be the hindrances to keeping that open in the evening, especially during the hotter times of the year?
Well, we are open in the evenings right now for lap swim and stuff. Is that what you mean? Or for public swim?
Open.
Oh, like for public?
Yeah.
The biggest struggle would be staffing as far as lifeguards and stuff because they do a lot of, a lot of them that go back to college and, but that would just mean, I mean, it's possible. It's just there's the logistics and the, you know, all that stuff of it, but it's in the, like, you mean like right now, like when it's still hot out in the September?
Yeah, you know, even, even late August, it just seems like it's warm. Again, I didn't use the monkey thing. It was just people, people that I interacted with said, you know, one thing that might help generate some additional funds would be opening it up in the evening for people to come.
I mean, we could do an early evening, possibly, something after school, maybe like starting after school and then finishing early evening before dinner and stuff like that. And then, still have our fitness programs and our other programs, our frac and fitness and everything happening in the evenings, but maybe have a public swim after school, maybe? Something like that? I can look into that.
Yeah, thanks.
Through the mayor. First of all, thank you. That is great information and that is yes to all of it. I see your enthusiasm and it looks like we've got a lot of ways to get a lot of bodies to Gauche Aquatic Park. And that's ultimately what we were trying to do when this process began, is keep it open year-round and get people to use it. So I think you've got a great, listen to the Survey Monkey, listen to the monkey and get more programs in the evening, more things to get kids there. I know talking with people in the public, tot time was off the charts. I heard over and over about tot time. So look at how we can expand programs, but great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Good job. Anybody from the public care to say anything about the item? Yes, sir.
Name's Thomas Burns, 1885, Green Gate. So I did go to the water park quite a few times and the things that concerned me were the diving board was very, very slick and dangerous, I thought. And then, also the stairway going up to the water slide was very dirty. And I thought it needed to be kept clean. So a little more maintenance and cleanliness might attract more people. That was my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So on the topic of tracking contracts, community service, we've created a very extensive spreadsheet. Staff enters the contract information and then on a monthly basis, I'll be meeting with my administrative assistant to review upcoming contracts, whether we're one month out, two months out. And that's the process of that. For our frac agreement, I will now ask our attorney, Mr. Shannon, to give a briefing.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I have counsel, I hope you don't mind if I just give it from here, it'll say walking back and forth.
No problem.
Just a very brief update. We have been in negotiations with frac to update the contract. We currently do not have a contract with them. We met last Thursday was our last meeting. We've been having very positive steps forward in completing the contract to be presented to the city council for presentation. The draft proposed by frac basically does the same rate as the old contract, has the same number of lanes and times as the old contract, does require frac to help with the covering of the pool so we can retain some heat and reduce some energy costs that way. And we also have some contract cleanup and some other updates to the language to refresh and bring the contract up to more current standards. I know the council requested and had questions with regards to insurance. Frac provided insurance certificate of liability at the very first meeting. We still have some coverage issues that we need to address on that and we're still running down some endorsement issues to see what the scope is and see that we're completely covered so that we have security. So we're still in the process of doing that. We have had one hurdle come up during negotiations last Thursday and as part of the contract documentation process, we reviewed the Secretary of State website with frac. The Secretary of State has listed the corporation as being suspended, at least at this time. This could affect frac's ability to enter into a contract and may potentially affect insurance coverage as well. Frac is in the process of addressing this and we hope to have an update for you in the future, or at least at the next meeting, with regards to the status of that. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Question?
Through the mayor, Mr. Chaffin. Being very familiar with the Secretary of State and corporate law and things, is this a small problem with the suspension? Because when a corporation is suspended, they can't enter into contract, there's all kinds of things. And if it's as simply as not filing with the Secretary of State, your statement of stockholders, that can be remedied real fast and be done. But is this a small problem or is this problem run much deeper?
I still do not have all the information yet. Frac may actually have that, either Sharon or Holly who might be able to address that. Maybe that can be better addressed to them.
Okay, same question, Holly.
So what, Sharon has done some digging on this and it's sort of somewhere in between. It's not an easy fix, but it is a paperwork error. So there were some, there have been some paperwork that hasn't been filed and it's just going to take some time to get that done. I would think it's probably two to three weeks before we can file it because there is some information we've got to dig up. But from all indications from the conversations with the franchise tax board and the Secretary of State, once it's done, it's pretty quick from there.
Okay, does the problems just lie with franchise tax board? This starts, because I do tax. So if you've got a Secretary of State, franchise tax board is involved in it, then that tends to go to treasury, so.
This isn't one of those issues.
Okay, how has this affected your 501(c)(3) status?
So it has not affected our 501(c)(3) because 501(c)(3) is a federal filing status. It has, there are some, like I said, there are some issues with the state. It's limited to the state in terms of what's been filed.
Okay, have we requested a verification of their 501(c)(3) status? Because that is public information as well.
We have yet to request that information at this time. It will be done as part of the contracting process to make sure that we have a 501(c)(3). I think I got that right. Status verified. Thank you.
Okay, it just kind of gives us an indication how, how deep this process is because if we have a situation that is at the federal level, then this isn't going to be a three-week process. It's going to be four weeks, it's going to be six months at a minimum, it's going to be two to three years more than likely. I've revived nonprofits that have gone off the cliff and, and it's not a quick process.
I completely agree and understand. There are several local, small organizations that have had similar problems. This is specifically limited to the state filings. It is not a federal issue. And to my know, I mean, and one of the organizations I know about personally hearing through it secondhand is the UBS Center Bar Association has had some of these issues. This is a byproduct of the bureaucracy that is California. That's where, that's where this is. This is, this really is just a paperwork issue.
So what happens to the kids in the meantime? That's, that's my question is, you know, if you're suspended and we can't go into contract and we've got issues, what happens to the kids? Because we were kind of all caught off guard at the workshop that we had because we were talking about the aquatic park and it seemed to be about the kids. And I was the one that made the comment, it's not about the kids, it's about the community. But we turned this backwards and the kids are part of the community. So what does this mean for the kids?
So the kids are actually registered through USA Swimming. And in terms of their registration and their ability to swim, they can continue swimming. This isn't, whether or not frac is a state corporation or something else, all of those kids could essentially go in, become unattached, and still be coached in the same pool. It's not that, in terms of frac and the kids, it does not impact that at all. Because of how USA Swimming is governed.
Okay, I understand that with USA Swim, I guess help me out here because I'm more concerned about the kids and how we take care of them. Because I met with a parent on National Night Out who had approached me and heard that frac was not going to take anyone else and just different things and really concerned. And I made that mom a promise and that promise was very simply put, that if, you know, something happened because of what she was hearing, that these kids got to be taken care of. So I want to know what we can do from our attorney because we have legal issues, potential insurance issues, we have potential 501(c)(3) issues. We can't have frac coaching in our pool if we can't enter into that. And I understand the kids can participate individually, but what can we do to make sure these kids are taken care of? Is this an opportunity for us as a city to step up and look at our parks and recs? And I don't know if Mr. McIntyre is even, you know, would be open to this, but it's, can we do something? Because I don't want to see these kids fall through the cracks because that's how it all started and we've circled back around. So can, what can we do?
The city and frac are in somewhat of a difficult circumstance right now because frac can't enter into any contracts and they're technically suspended. It's almost in some ways like they don't exist as a corporate person.
Right.
So that creates issues or potentially creates issues with your insurance coverage in the short term until it gets fixed. There are some other issues that creates. There are, I do not have all the answers because I don't have all the information. And my suggestion or recommendation to you is if you were interested in looking at how this would be approached, or at least programs, a way we could get coverage, my recommendation would be recommend that frac sit down with like Ann Gillan and Brad McIntyre and the Parks Department and see what they could do with regards to programming or what programming options may be available or what the frac or the children's needs are in order to address that. I can sense and understand the council's concern about the insurance coverage issue and that this is kind of a little bit of a sideways twist in our path forward. But at this particular point, I don't have sufficient information from it and I would actually refer to frac and to the Parks Department as the individuals who would have the expertise to probably draft more options for the council that would be viable.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, again, because this, we need to get these kids taken care of, could we direct staff to do what he just said and basically bring this back at our next meeting, which is September 3rd with an update? Because we should have an idea of really where this problem lies and what we need to do because I really just don't want to see the kids fall by the wayside.
If I may, September 3rd may be a little bit quick. I think in terms of frac and part of the issue is we don't know how big the issue is in terms of the paperwork and all of that. I guess I would, I would ask for frac's perspective to have it be the meeting after the September 3rd, one, two weeks more. And that'll give frac some time, that'll give, that'll give frac some time to, to really figure out the paperwork, get that filed. It'll also give frac some time to talk with staff and with the city. We're already on August 20th, there's a long weekend in there, school just started. There's, there's a whole bunch of other things going on, so that would be the request.
Option B. My proposed option B. That we get an update, because on September 3rd, it doesn't matter if we've got it solved or not, but I practice in the world of the Internal Revenue Service and Franchise Tax Board. That's a few phone calls, and it's very easy to provide us back a detailed report of what's missing. It doesn't mean it has to be fixed by the 3rd, but that'll give us an idea of where this problem really lies.
I think it'd be a good idea to get an update if we can, two weeks is, is pretty short. Sometimes even getting all the personalities and the schedules together is a challenge. If you're able to have a meeting, or at least a preliminary meeting to get, gather some focus, and maybe look under a few more rocks between now and then, we would appreciate an update by September 3rd. By no means do we expect an answer and a resolution.
I just, we need to be clear about that.
Absolutely, and I, and I understand that. But I think we would appreciate an update on September 3rd, no matter where it may be.
Okay.
If you're not able to get your schedules to coordinate by then, let us know, and we'll go to the next meeting. I mean, it's as simple as that. We're not going to try to stand in your way. We want to, we want to help and be a part of this, just like we were from day one, believe it or not. But, so yeah.
Yes, Mayor, you've all, you actually have been incredibly helpful, and I, I think on behalf of FRAC, we can, you know, thank you for taking the time to meet with us and get this as fixed as it can be to date.
And, and we will. We'll, we'll come to an end through all this. We have another hurdle, as stated by the senior attorney, but we'll get over that one and to the finish line, one way or another, together.
Great.
All right, thank you very much. Brad, did you have anything more to contribute, or?
I, I, through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is directed to the city attorney, because I don't know that we've resolved the city's liability issue.
We haven't. We, still not clear at this particular time as to whether or not we have our insurance coverage. There may be liability there pending this time. We do have a certificate of insurance, but we don't have any details. A lot of the times, you cannot get full coverage under insurance unless you have an active contract. We don't have an active contract. We do not yet have what's called the endorsements, or the actual policy itself. Sometimes when you get a certificate of liability, it just has numbers on the front and what the coverage is. But that doesn't describe the nuances of the coverage. And there may be nuances within that coverage that could create issues as to whether or not we have coverage. So as I sit here today, I cannot say, yes, we have coverage, and I cannot say, no, we don't have coverage. It's, it's up in the air.
In following the theme of trying to keep the kids in the pool, which I think all of us up here subscribe to, what are the options to keep them going while we sort through the, the information gathering phase?
I would suggest for options, again, referring back to Brad as to coming back with those options, but just off the top of my particular head, some of the options could be, if you're wanting to minimize risk, and it's just the attorney and me, and I got to tell you the options. One of the options is to close down the operations so that you're not having that. And I know that none of you want to do that. Another option is, is the city or some other entity that qualifies, or who can provide insurance and coverage during the time, may be able to step in. But again, I don't have the details on that. It's a little bit preliminary at this point. I think Brad and the members of FRAC might have additional opportunities to see what options are available and report back to the council. This may be something that can be quickly fixed. It may not be, but during the period of time between when we get it fixed and now, there is some question as to whether or not we have liability exposure.
When a, a citizen comes in to use the pool and pays the fee, we're covering them under our insurance.
Yes, we are.
Could we simply have an arrangement where the swimmers give us some sort of voucher or entry fee?
We might be able to do something like that. Again, that would fall under the city's liability. Generally, when clubs come in, our recommendation as an attorney is always to reduce your legal risk, get insurance coverage, get indemnification if you can do that. If the city wants to make a policy and call and say, hey, the kids are really important for this period of time, we're going to take the risk that everything's going to be fine, and we're just going to be under the city's coverage, you can do that. That is a legal option. But there is a risk associated with that.
Would it be appropriate then to potentially ask staff to look at that option, run that through you, and report back to us?
Yes, that is a legal option.
Thank you. Through the mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on that.
Yep, which was my understanding, what we, it's going to be part of the follow-up. We're going to do, hope, report an update back on September 3rd.
Believe.
I thought that was just the status of, of FRAC's contract ability. This was a different thing to cover the, in the interim, cover the city's liability specifically.
All right, thank you very much. I was, my impression was that the insurance issue was going to be on the, on the part of that discussion. But okay.
Through, through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Another option that you mentioned, Shannon, is the idea of how possibly they could partner up with another club in the area? Is there an opportunity for that, perhaps, if you can research and have that conversation as well?
I would imagine, I would hope FRAC would know if there was another club that was fairly close to be able to partner with. They may be able to ask that, answer that question.
Holly, is there any potential other club in the area that could immediately, you know, support this process as you're working through what you're trying to solve here? Yeah, I, I would suggest, and when other nonprofits that I've worked with, they've had sometimes gaps in their, you know, status, and we're able to then work with another nonprofit to cover them during that process. So I would, I would suggest that, because FRAC is an important partner to our city, and so we need to figure out a way to solve this. Okay, so thank you.
So through the mayor, just to get a little clarification. If the city attorney notifies me that their insurance does not work, then my recommendation would be that we make it for a short term, or whatever the duration is of the issue, for, make it a recreation program, like we would treat it like any other recreation program.
Is that something we have to go through any process, or can we just bless it?
Pretty much you can just bless it. The, the concern, there's some, a couple of things that I don't know. You know, I, I don't know. There'll be a charge, obviously, but I need to get a full scope of understanding as far as what their, what that charge would be as it relates to staff, instructors. And so I, I couldn't sit here and tell you what it's going to cost. But I was just jotting down things real quick. I think I would, it'd be smart for you to direct staff to meet with the board. First step, second step, is to get their actual expenses and revenue, so it gives us a feeling for kind of what we're getting into on a financial status. And then I just kind of have a question, you know, meet with the FRAC parents, just to get feedback, make sure that they're on the same page. And then from there, we'll create a budget like we do all of our other recreation programs. We have revenues, we have expenditures, and then we put a budget together for it. I, I do not know if that meets FRAC's desire or intent, but I'm, but it does put them in the pool. And staff can do that.
All right. We don't have FRAC up at the podium right now. However, from what I have, for the meeting, that we're going to be getting an update on the 3rd, and hopefully sooner regarding insurance, discuss recreational program, meet with the board, break through and get answers on the insurance status, discuss their finances, and determine if there's another club they can perhaps partner with under their umbrella. Basically be a satellite club, or using our pool from another club. Am I missing anything? Yeah, and the 501(c)(3) update. Okay. Then, Mr. Attorney, are we, by continuing on, I don't know when FRAC has their next session, if we do not do, or do not know if we're properly insured or not, are we essentially rolling the dice as far as like exposure on this, for the city?
Yes, you're rolling the dice.
What can we do to avoid that? Do we just convert it to a program right now and have them pay as they go?
It would be under the city's ambient right now, as with any other swimmer, unless there are special insurance, unless there are special insurance provisions I don't know about. Typically, when you step foot on city's facilities, whether, however you're getting on there and paying for it, you would be covered under the city's liability insurance, and we're part of a risk assessment pool. Now, Robin, or any one of the other financial people may have a little bit more information on how that's done. At this point, I don't have the information exactly how the city's coverage is. I could come back. But if we don't know that 100% that we have coverage at this particular point, you're rolling your dice, just like you are any other person who comes onto the pool, pays their money to go in, and goes into the swimming pool. So I believe our insurance should cover them based on just general insurance principles. We are at a risk. There won't be somebody else that we can claim on their insurance, unfortunately, one of these kids gets hurt. But that's a risk that we also care, carry with all users of the pool right now, who aren't, who are not members of FRAC.
So if we do, for lack of a better word, nothing at this point, any, any child that goes through under the umbrella of being a member of FRAC, they're covered at the same level as anybody else, any other person that comes in?
And I hesitate, I, I would normally just say yes, but I have to say yes with an asterisk. I haven't read our policies, so I don't know what the scope of the city's actual coverage is. But in general principles, they would be covered. So as a general rule of thumb, if they're coming in and using our pool, and, you know, heaven forbid, there's some sort of incident where somebody gets hurt, it would usually be part of our insurance, or part of our risk coverage pool that we're in that would cover that.
Okay. Are you good?
Yeah.
All right. I, I, I don't like uncertainty when it comes to liability, especially something like that. But, all right, yeah, go ahead.
So essentially, instead of having additionally insured, we're taking the full burden.
Exactly.
And if, if, again, if, I'm not going to what if it. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that nothing will happen.
Yes, everything's going to be just fine, right?
One final question.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, does it make a difference if they're on our property in assumed free position, because the kids aren't paying when they come in? Does that change if they paid a monetary amount to come in for those? Because a lot of times, that changes the natures inside of a insurance-type contract. So, you know, we've been getting rent from FRAC, but we don't have a contract that should be under their insurance. So if we charged them a nominal fee for practice, now that they're like any other swimmer in our pool, does that start closing that real quick to give us some breathing room here?
It, it may. However, again, I do not know what our insurance endorsements are and the scope of our coverage is, because we haven't looked into that. Sometimes it makes a difference, sometimes it doesn't. And what we have is a whole bunch of ambiguity at this point, and a surprise, and we're trying to sort through this. We don't have a lot of the information that we would normally like. So I'd like to give you an answer, yes or no? The general principle is, is they're probably coverage, and we would be liable for them, and right now, they're just additional insureds, assureds at the best. At the worst, we would be, we'd be subject to that, and we'd have to take the hit without having an additional insured.
Which we don't have an additional insured with, with the run-of-the-mill day swim anyway, correct?
We do not. That is correct.
All right, so if that, if they're just falling under what we're doing, doing business for every day anyway, instead of an additional coverage, right?
Right, that's, that's generally how it goes, but Mayor, again, I want to be clear.
I understand.
That, that can depend on what the endorsements say as part of our insurance policies and our.
As long as at a minimum, they're covered at the same level as the general public?
They should be. Again, I.
I love you, man.
I, I just can't tell until I look at it.
That's why they give me this soon.
Sorry. So 95% of the cases, they should be. But there's always that 5% hanging out there that we don't know. So we do have that.
May I ask you to, at your earliest possible convenience, confirm that?
Thank you, I'd be delighted to.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comment on that? Sir?
So just to clarify, I'm going to wait to hear from the city attorney.
Yeah.
Before I move forward to meet with FRAC and start this next Plan B, if you will. Okay, thank you.
And to the man, the bottom line here is, is FRAC, they're working on this every day. They want it done tomorrow, so I, they'll, I'm pretty sure they're going to get it done as quickly as possible. It's not going to be the three, four-month program. They want to be able to have the kids in there.
Well, I, I know, but having dealt with 501(c)(3)'s before, it's not that they have the info. They're just kind of taking a while to go through their file cabinet. Some of this stuff needs to be hunted down, and it's, it's pretty lengthy. So I know you're going to do everything in your power to make it as soon as possible, so. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 16.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry, before we do.
Here we go.
Just want to make sure I'm clear in our direction, so that Brad and I are both going in the same direction on this. So you, you would like an update on September 3rd if possible. We recognize that FRAC will be processing items during that time. My job is to look into insurance coverage and get back to the city council and update you as to that, and including the risk. We'll be discussing potential recreational program options. We've asked FRAC to look into other clubs that might possibly sponsor during a gap period or something during that period of time. We will be asking for the 501(c)(3) status and information to the extent that it's available. And I believe that is everything. Is there anything else, like looking, sitting down with FRAC and going over program options? Was that the other?
That's an option, and we'd like to meet with the board and discuss finances as well. I remember, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And the insurance was ASAP, sir?
Oh, yeah.
And the insurance is ASAP for council, please.
Anything else before we move on to number 16? All right. Playground equipment for Happy Park.
So this item is a second view for you. At the last council meeting, you asked us to table and bring it back to you. It is requesting council to purchase playground equipment for Happy Park. Happy Park, that, the playground, current playground was installed in 1998. It has well exceeded its useful life. The youth commission was part of the selection process. We will have equipment from two to five years old, and we'll also have equipment from five to 12 years old. Now, I'm not as knowledgeable as Mr. Conry, so I could exactly explain every piece of equipment, but pictures say a thousand words. Fiscal impact is just a little over 90,000, which includes the equipment and installation. That is our recommendation, and I gladly take any questions at this time.
Any member of the public here to comment? All right, seeing none, I'll take action or a comment from council.
I'll move to, through the mayor.
Yes.
Like to make Staus' recommendation of purchasing the playground equipment for Happy Park, recommendation A and B.
A motion to approve Staus' recommendation. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, none. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Through the mayor, I do want to add to Brad. Brad, I want to say that the process of including the youth commission to selecting the playground on all of that, very well done. Very nice. Thank you.
Item number 17 is amendment to the 2019 Collection Services Franchise Agreement with Recology UBS Sutter, presented by Diana Langley, our interim city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
As such, too.
Huh?
Last meeting as such, too.
Yes, yes.
You made it. Well, we'll see.
I made it.
We'll see here.
Going out with a bang on this one, huh? All right. So before you tonight is the amendment to the 2019 Collection Services Franchise Agreement with Recology UBS Sutter. For a little bit of background, in October of 2018, the city council approved a new collection service franchise agreement with Recology UBS Sutter for implementation on October 1st of this year. In February of 2019, representatives from Recology submitted a request to the city requesting to evaluate amending the franchise agreement. To shift gears a little bit to BioSalads disposal, in December of 2011, the city council approved a side letter agreement with Recology for BioSalads disposal, which BioSalads is a byproduct of the wastewater treatment process. The current side letter agreement expires September 30th, 2019. And in, on May 21st of this year, city council authorized myself to negotiate a new agreement for BioSalads disposal with Recology. So to go, I'm going to spend a little bit of time going through the details of the amendment, the proposed amendment. So for on-call electronic waste collection and on-call universal waste collection, the current agreement states that Recology is to provide on-call collection services on a subscription basis at a rate not exceeding the maximum service rate for such service. However, that rate was not determined. So the proposed amendment will modify the language to reflect that the need can be met under current programs, which would be the household hazardous waste disposal facility, or going out to Recology's facilities in Marysville. For vehicle requirements, the current agreement requires that Recology shall provide a fleet of Model 2019 collection vehicles sufficient in number and capacity to efficiently perform the work required by the agreement in strict accordance with its terms. Under the proposed amendment, they'd, we'd remove the requirement for Model 2019 collection vehicles, and instead include a list of the vehicle inventory Recology intends to use to provide services under the agreement. So their current fleet dates from September of 2015 to February of 2019. thousand nineteen. In regard to single-family dwelling carts, under the current agreement, Recology will provide each single-family dwelling with new wheeled carts for automated collection. The default service would be ninety-six gallon, though customers could, um, request a sixty-four or thirty-two gallon cart, but they would pay the same as the ninety-six gallon cart rate. Under the proposed amendment, the requirement for replacement of new carts would be removed, and single-family dwelling customers would be able to choose between thirty-two, sixty-four, or ninety-six gallon carts for solid waste and receive a sixty-four gallon cart for recyclable materials and ninety-six gallon cart for green waste and pay based upon the size of the solid, uh, waste cart. For distribution of carts and bins, under the current agreement, Recology would purchase and distribute new carts and bins to customers. Under the proposed amendment, it would remove the requirement for new carts and bins. For recycling and organic materials improper procedure, the current agreement defines a process to work with customers when the customer does not properly segregate recyclable materials or organic materials from the solid waste, green waste, exempt waste, or construction demolished, demolition debris bins. Under the proposed amendment, it would add language to clarify that the infractions noted are per agreement year and to allow Recology to charge a fee for three or more instances of contamination in customers' recyclables container. The amendment also requests to address Recology's responsibilities with respect to AB three forty-one and eighteen twenty-six compliance. And under the proposed amendment, this would actually put Yuba City's contract in alignment with the, um, Regional Waste Management Authority contracts for the other agencies within the authority. In regard to right to audit, the current agreement, um, deals with city audits of Recology's financial and other records. The language is virtually identical to the RWMA contract, but vague about when Recology would need to reimburse the city for audit costs. So under the proposed amendment, it adds language that the scope of the audit may be expanded and the city may be able to recover any additional costs resulting from the expanded scope if inaccuracies are found in Recology's payments to the city. Extraordinary rate adjustments, under the current agreement, it allows Recology to request special rate adjustments for a wide variety of unspecified cost changes. Under the proposed amendment, it would delete the current section ten point six and adopt the RWMA methodology for special rate adjustments, which only allows Recology to request special rate adjustments for certain specified events, which are standard in the industry, such as changes in law and changes in government fees. The RWMA methodology also allows the city to recover its costs of reviewing the special rate adjustment request and has a clear process for handling such requests. Section ten point six, uh, this section doesn't exist in the current agreement. The new section would define the process for how a request for an extraordinary rate adjustment should be conducted. And then section ten point seven would also be a new section, that adds language that the initiator of the request for an extraordinary rate adjustment shall bear the burden of justifying by substantial evidence its entitlement to any adjustment in maximum service rates under section ten point six. So again, to shift gears to biosolids handling. So rather than address the biosolids through a side letter, um, working with the city attorney recommended, actually including as part of the agreement, and it provides disposal rates defined for the next four years, and with the, any years after that being inflated per the WST index. I'm trying to recall what the WST acronym. Water, sewer, trash, yes, index. And so, um, as of October first, two thousand nineteen, we would pay thirty-eight dollars per ton. October first, twenty twenty, it'd increase to fifty-one dollars. October first, twenty twenty-one, it requires, increased to sixty-one dollars. And October first, twenty twenty-two, it'd increase to seventy-six dollars. In addition to the disposal rate, you would also have a haul rate of three hundred seventy dollar, five dollars per haul. And then after October, um, first of twenty twenty, you would have that increase per the WST index as well. Key part of this agreement is that either party may terminate the biosolids handling in its entirety after the first three years upon ninety days prior written notice. And this is key as we are performing our wastewater master plan and evaluating different, um, options for biosolids disposal. You know, during that timeframe, there might become something that comes up that's more cost-effective, and this gives us an out. And then another, uh, this is a city amendment request. Since we were evaluating an amendment to the contract, there has been, um, changes in legislation that we felt was necessary to update the agreement to comply with current legislation. So the fiscal impact, Recology has agreed to match Yuba City's rates to the other five agencies within the Regional Waste Management Authority. So that's Sutter and Yuba Counties, cities of Live Oak, Marysville, and Wheatland. Cost impacts for biosolids handling, currently we pay approximately two hundred ninety thousand dollars. As of October first, two thousand nineteen, that would increase to almost five hundred thousand dollars. And if you extend out to October first, twenty twenty-two, you'd be looking at almost eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. These rate increases were not included in the latest wastewater rate model. Um, next year, as we go through the process of initiating an additional, a new rate study, we will input that into the model to see what the impacts are to rates. And in regard to the rates, as mentioned previously, under this proposed amendment, the rates would match the RWMA. Within the staff report, um, there was a comparison of the proposed rates to the rates that are in the current agreement that we have. There's fluctuations, plus and minus, across the board. Um, for the residential rates, for the carts, for the most part, they are less than the current, uh, Yuba City rates. Uh, and then also the customers have the flexibility of choosing the bin size that they want. With regard to commercial, some of the rates are a little bit less, some of the rates are a little bit more. Um, but there's, you know, minor fluctuations when compared to the current contract that we have in place. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I would like to note that we do have some representatives from Recology in the audience. We have Sal Caniglia, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Dave Adler, and then Tom Norris as well. And I know that they'd be happy to answer any operational questions or any questions related to their amendment.
All right. Thank you very much. You guys have any before we send it out to the public? Nothing yet? All right. So we have, uh, public comment period on this. We have one for who's individual, but John Buckland, if you could take the podium, he has five minutes, and followed by Scott Cunin, who has a interest card here, a speaker card. And if anyone else would like to comment, feel free to queue up behind Scott.
Mayor, city council, members, and citizens, thank you for allowing me to speak regarding this agenda item. This is, uh, an amendment to a contract currently not in force. No comments I make tonight are intended to reflect on any employees or owners of Recology Yuba Sutter. My comments are on behalf of the ratepayer, directed to actions of Recology management, and those charged as a fiduciary for the citizens of Yuba City. The council is charged to act in illegal and ethical relationship of trust. The actions of this council need to be independent and absent of special influence. Some members of this council are personal friends, uh, with current and recent managers of Recology Yuba Sutter. Some refer to these relationships on social media as brother. All of you received a portion of the tens of thousands of dollars in, in your political, uh, campaigns over the last three years issued by, uh, Recology Yuba Sutter. Two of you spent time, uh, in a resort, uh, with a consultant of Recology, and at least one of you was whisked off on a private plane to meet with the CEO of Recology in San Francisco. The action tonight, or the proposed action tonight, is a clear perversion of a trust of public bidding process, which engaged four national bidders to determine the best services for our ratepayers in a true market test. The contract was directed with public comment over a period of a year and best practices in the industry to reduce waste contamination from overflowing into recycling and provide apples-to-apples comparisons of the market and proposals to provide services. The contract was voted on by the elected body, uh, and signed by Mayor Dipball on October the third, twenty eighteen. The contract was countersigned by the CEO of Recology on one thirty of this year. Two days later, the vice president and group manager of the inland group for Recology presented a letter requesting five changes to the contract, including the elimination of the new equipment. Why is this significant, you may ask? This proposal is clearly a bait and switch. In, in the spring of twenty eighteen, the prior council directed negotiators to engage Recology Yuba Sutter negotiations in an effort to award the waste management contract. Shortly after negotiations were initiated, Recology Yuba Sutter placed an alternative proposal on the table. In this proposal, they offered to reduce the rate by a significant percentage in lieu of the all-new equipment requirement. This meant Recology Yuba Sutter would be relieved of purchasing new equipment at the estimated cost of ten point five million dollars. And they would provide the ratepayer the savings. Shortly after this proposal was offered, negotiations stalled. Negotiations didn't resume until Recology Yuba Sutter reached an agreement with the RWMA five. When negotiations resumed, Recology Yuba Sutter withdrew its, its offer regarding the rate reduction with the elimination for new equipment. Yuba City Council, you are in a tight spot. The ratepayer is entitled to further reduction in rates as proposed related to the elimination of the equipment provision. Your fiduciary responsibility is to complete a financial analysis of the savings and to incorporate those savings into the rates before considering implementation. Failure to meet this responsibility will likely be met with legal challenges on behalf of the bidders and the ratepayers. I do commend Recology for taking a proactive position in clarifying language that may have been confusing. But I would ask these questions of the council. Why have you co-mingled the biosolids into the contract? This should be a contract held separately and tested for rate on the open market. What's the current status of the closure, post-closure liability agreement for the landfill in Marysville? Offering pricing options based on collection size will lead to overflow contamination, and the consequences will be the trash police are coming to your house. I live in the south end of Yuba City. Monday's collection day, we have an insurgent of, an insurgent force of homeless that go through our trash on Monday night. These individuals toss trash from one receptacle to the other. They're searching for treasure. This con, this contract makes the ratepayers responsible for the fines imposed by this contract. Are the commercial customers subject to fines for contamination? Many of the commercial bins-
Hi, John, there's your five minutes right there. Scott, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Harris.
Evening.
Other honorable members of the council and those of the public here from, from, from Yuba City. I apologize, Mayor, I did not even find out about this until about eight-thirty or nine o'clock this morning, and I didn't know that it was on tonight's agenda. So I did not have an opportunity to request the, the extra two minutes that I would have requested had I, I didn't have twenty-four hours to do that. So if possible, you can grant me an extra minute or two to go through what I've, just one page to, I would appreciate, appreciate it. I'm deeply concerned about this amendment to our contract, uh, for waste management. There is not a complete, in spite of what we've seen, not a complete financial analysis of each item considering, considered for modification in this proposal. For example, the new equipment requirement, which was previously mentioned, for the winning contractors, proposed to be removed. This part of this, as part of this amendment, the cost savings to the contractor should be analyzed and reported to the public. The, in, in case you were wondering, the savings to the contractor is over eleven million dollars. The residential rates for some services went down a few cents, the commercial recycling rates increased by over twenty-five percent in some areas and went down a few cents in other areas. The increased decre, the increased and decreased costs for commercial businesses should be analyzed and disclosed to the public. The city should employ a solid waste professional to analyze such information, perhaps a city, uh, city's original consultant would be best, uh, since he already has the comparative, uh, information. The comparison analysis provided by city staff is not consistent with comparing the original Yuba City contract with the proposed city contract. For example, in item four, which we saw up here just a moment ago, the analyzed comparison between the four, the, the four cubic yard bin of, was six times per week was eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, eighty-five cents, when the actual rate per the current signed contract was seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. These amendments and conditions are a dangerous example of backroom politics, which we should, should avoid. If you approve this, this, this amendment, you will be giving the contractor over eleven million dollars with no consideration for the ratepayers, and that eleven million represents the money that was saved by putting this contract out to bid. Perhaps the contractor's financial stability with the contract they agreed to is in question. If so, the contract should be awarded to the next highest bidder. In closing, let me say this, there is hardly anyone who knows about this matter, because we are surreptitiously giving away millions of dollars and hiding what is, what is really happening, uh, or what is not happening for the ratepayers. We are changing the conditions of a competitively bid contract, which has already been awarded. If the contractor does not want to comply with their, the contractor obligations, then this contract should be awarded to the next highest bidder. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to comment? Welcome, Phil Trainer.
It is nice to be known into the club.
You so sure?
First of all, I would like to say that, uh, from, uh, a statement that I got from a law firm, uh, when you put anybody under a five-minute, uh, limitation, you're not abiding by the Brown Act. If those people come up and do something on behalf of the city, for the good of the press, for the good of the citizens, they can speak all day, supposedly. That's what I've been told. I paid a little bit of money to find that out. If it's wrong, it doesn't make any difference. Thank you. Now, I'll go back to the issue of the, uh, biosolids. I came here tonight because I read about it in the paper this morning. I think it's wonderful. It is one of the things that you have to do. The state are gonna come back and tell you, you must do these things. It amazes me how the cost is going to go up from thirty-eight dollars a ton to ninety dollars a ton in three years. I have a little bit of a background in this. I brought a group of people up to the city of Yuba City to discuss this maybe four or five years ago. These people were specialists in the game. The appeal Democrat made a remark that if you take these biosolids, you can turn them into fertilizer. Uh, the state would disagree with you on that. They would say that you can turn it into soil amendments, not fertilizer. But I've used the soil amendments at home, and they worked out great. Uh, I would suggest that before you, or I would like to think, before the council go any further on this, that they decide to do something and let the public know what's happening. I think you should, I believe you should probably try to renegotiate the whole thing down, because going from thirty-eight to ninety bucks a ton is ridiculous. Here I go. You're overseeing the Brown Act now. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Um, before we have Mr. Burns, Mr. City Attorney, he's the second time Phil has mentioned that. Would you, can you please provide us an opinion with that when you get a chance? Not necessarily right now, but we, if we're violating the law, we don't want to do that.
I can tell you right now, you are not violating the Brown Act by setting time limits, as long as they're evenly applied and consistently applied.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Burns?
I have heard that it is illegal to have a tiered system on your, on your utility rates, but we have that, uh, I think I read that through the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. So, um, that is happening with our water and with our PG&E. But I wanted to say this, that, uh, commercially, I, I have a business and pay, pay Recology. And I've been paying, well, last year I was paying about two ninety, uh- And I've been paying, well, last year I was paying about $290 a month for our bin. Then earlier this year, it jumped up to three, right around 310, okay? And now I'm up to 345. So it just keeps going up and up and up. And now fortunately, my wife takes care of the garbage bill at home. Praise the Lord, that's one I don't have to pay. And I just choose not to know what's happening there. So I'm imagining that's going up too. And, and like the man said, the, there is people going through our trash receptacles weekly. That's a fact all over the city. And I don't think they're doing too well in mine because I do recycle. But to find the customer because something is put from one dumpster, or one container to the other, yeah, that seems a little far out to me, a little over the top. And I think Recology, I think they're, they're getting their fair share out of us. So that's my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you once again for letting me speak. I heard the reference to backroom politics, et cetera, et cetera. We all know that what we got through last year was not a pleasurable experience for anyone. It wasn't anything that worked out to being to any one person's advantage. But I'd like to state that I believe that the staff has been looking at this, and they are communicating with you, and you're looking into what's going on. There are reasons for what's taking place. I respect that, I expect it, I expect you to do the right thing. Referring back to where we stand, the rates are going up, they were going up anyway. We had bidding from another company, the rates were going up from the other company. It was much more than the company that we accepted. It's all been gone through. Was it all agreed on? No, I've gone through the Information Act, trying to get an updated version of where we've stood. And as you know, it still is not in existence, the complete contract, everything all agreed to completely. It wasn't when the rates began, went into payment. And so it's been up in the air, it's not a good play, position to be in. However, I think you're doing the right thing. I think the voters made a great determination on how they felt about things in this particular arena and how things were handled by hiring a company to go out, find out through town halls, how the community felt about it. They came back and reported, the community was very happy with the carrier we had. Then immediately, our council at that time turned around and said, well, we don't like hearing that, we're going to set it out to bid anyway, regardless. With the help of numerous, or offers and numerous help from people who are very experienced in business itself and the processes and procedures, they were turned away, nothing was listened to, and we've come up with this quagmire that we now have, which has validity from every side, from every statement that was made. But the reality is, what's best for our community truly? Is a new truck the best thing down my street? Is that really worth it? And the size of my container, I think I should be able to choose at any time I want and not have to have a large container? Anyway, there's numerous things, you can tear this thing apart, but I'm expecting you to do your best. I may not agree 100% with what you do, but I respect what you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. John Cassidy, thank you for your diligence in this effort. I'm one citizen that's sick of the garbage question. From a business standpoint, a personal standpoint, we need to move on as a community. We've had an organization here for, since I moved here in 1985, that's done a remarkable job in, in handling both business and personal garbage collection. Their record speaks for itself. You'll do the right thing because I know the integrity of this group that, that sits at the council, and we just need to move on. This is something that's lingered for way too long, and a garbage lingers, it doesn't smell very good. And so we need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Evening, council, and mayor. I just wanted to tell you that I applaud the decision to lend a little more reliance on the RWMA. It's established, it's a quality organization that does high-quality oversight, and it gives us constant auditing of not just the performance of the organization, but everything down to the performance of the equipment and the condition of the facilities that we operate. It was mentioned briefly about the landfill. That was probably the, in my view, the, the very core, the beginning of this whole battle that has occurred. The last landfill in California that was permitted was in the early 90s. That was our Ostrom Road landfill. It is not easy to do that kind of stuff in this state. We really are opposed to accepting trash anywhere. It's a necessity, we're never going to be without. So a big portion of what was it being achieved with the RWMA when the city of Yuba City was active, was actually setting money aside. We had a, a year where the cost of operating was less, we had a surplus of funds. We decided to hold that for future replacement of landfill if we choose to do it as our own community, not being beholden to any one individual corporation. We all agreed that was a good thing. Within a couple of years, the Yuba City portion was about 40% of the makeup of the waste collection in this region, got to a level of about $1 million. Suddenly, the deal changed, and Yuba City started exploring different options with the assumption that maybe there was more money to be gained. And I think at this point in the road, it's plain to see, this is a really complex issue. While that argument started into today, China no longer accepts recyclables. It was a big part of rate management. And, you know, to get stabilization back in, and more importantly, to be prepared for the future, I think participation with the RWMA for our region, for the size of our region, is the best path forward. So thank you for considering that action. Appreciate the work they're doing, and appreciate Recology's work as well. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Anybody else care to say anything? All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. If any.
I'm not ready yet.
You're not ready yet?
I'll, through the mayor, if, ready for comments, aren't you? You know, I, I agree with many of the comments that were made tonight. You know, Mr. Cassidy, it's time, like you said, it's time to move on, you're here somewhere. There you are. It's time to move on. What this process has done to this community over the last three years is absolutely atrocious, and that process ultimately was what led me to decide to be a part of this council because I saw what it did to this community. I spoke at that lecture and over there myself, and it went nowhere. Looking at what this contract does, Mr. Nicoletti, you're here, there you are, you nailed it on the head. We, as a city, decided a couple of years ago to go rogue and go, do our own thing. And it's time that we get back and build community, and being part of the RWMA is important. My opinion, we should have never have pulled out and gone rogue ourself. There are strength in numbers, and it's, it's a good process. So you're, you're definitely right on there. Things that went on during the process, that was alarming to me, and I commend my two colleagues that's up here with me. I watched them try to reach out and do some things, and were unsuccessful, but this process has been going on for months. I trust the subcommittee that has worked on this, and I do appreciate your, your input because there was a lot of loose ends left. And at the end of the day, we heard it loud and clear from our ratepayers, just like we talked about with water and sewer, there's only so much that the pocketbook can bear. And as I said, when we were out doing our speeches and stuff, why should someone pay roughly, if I remember correctly, it was $54 over here for a great big tote, and, you know, pay $32 across the river for a great big tote? This contract says, you know what, you can right-size yourself, and the difference every month's about a dollar difference. It really caters to, to our ratepayers. Do we like the fact that rates are going up? No, but we can blame the state of California for that a lot because we've heard it from Mr. Kuhn, and we've heard it from Recology, we've heard, they are hitting us left and right with different fees, and the China's a problem and everything. So a lot of the rates are going up with things that's out of our control. But what we have to do is put this to bed, move forward, and do what's best for our community. And to go back to a comment that I heard at the beginning of the night, to disconnect the biosolids from the waste contract, ladies and gentlemen, that was the biggest problem we had. Because whether you realized it or not, if we didn't do anything with the biosolids, we had a big pile of you-know-what on the south end of town. And that's what we were left to deal with. It was part of the process when it started, but it conveniently got overlooked and set aside. So this council, as within many other things, have just had to step up and deal with it. And we're going to take care of business. I think, my personal opinion, this is the good thing to do. It's a positive thing, it's great for the ratepayers, it's great in rebuilding relationships, and it takes care of the big pile of crap that we could end up with on the south end of town. Not interested, and as I heard earlier, send it to the next bidder and this and that, forget that, we're way beyond that, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Mayor. This is basically language cleanup. This is basically doing what we should have done in the first place, staying consistent with all of the municipalities around so that we're doing what's right for everyone. So I support the work that the subcommittee did. We've got great partners in an organization, and, you know, I won't, they are a for-profit company. We all are, every one of us that owns a business. Mr. Cassidy, you're president of a bank. You don't work for free, do you, sir? No, neither do I. I own my own business. We also dabbled into the, the mechanism of fleet maintenance. They're still going to spend the $11 million, but they're going to do it in a proper manner. They're going to spend it over time. They're going to replace the trucks as they need it. If you go out and buy all brand-new trucks, woo, they look pretty for right now, but guess what? In 10 years, you got to replace all of them again, you're nowhere. That is a very ill-thought process to how to deal with fleet maintenance. Anyone will tell you, even within our city, you have a fleet maintenance replacement program. You never replace the entire fleet all at one time. Garbage bins, totes, if they're bad, they'll get replaced. But at the end of the day, if you go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and buy all brand-new bins and totes, give it three months, throw a bunch of trash in it, you have smelly bins all over again. We have a obligation to do what's right for the community. We do not have a right to dabble into business operations and decisions that are made at that level. That is ill-thought-out, that is basically immature in thinking, and we need to stay above the fray and just do what's right, what's for our taxpayers, our ratepayers, and building back relations with RWMA. So I fully support the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, a lot of things have been said tonight. I approached this from a business aspect and a residential aspect. I looked at it upside down, sideways, was engaged in the process while the council, former council and staff were engaged with the contract. The one, the one thing, and Councilman Shaw mentioned it, the biosolids has been kicked down the road since 2011. Kicked down the road. And one of the things that this council is going to try not to do is kick things down the road. They need to be addressed as they come up. Yeah, we could have taken the biosolids, taken it out, negotiated that by itself. There's a couple key things. Those biosolids are treated differently by the state now. They cannot be used as cover in, in a landfill. So that's going to inflate the cost. And if we did go out on the open market, chances are, we would potentially pay even more than what we're being paid or what we're being charged now. We had an opportunity, an opportunity to benefit the residents by including the biosolids negotiation into the residential and the commercial rates. We chose that option. I think it's in the best interests of the citizens of Yuba City, and therefore, that's a support position I took. I agree with Councilman Shaw. As a business owner, I don't want government telling me necessarily how to, to replace my fleet. I don't go out and tell the farmer when it's time to change his tractor. Why should I tell a garbage company when it's time to replace their fleet? They're in the business. If they're going to be successful, they're going to know when to do that, and I respect that. Same thing with the bins. What was the purpose of having every bin in this city replaced? Didn't make sense to me as a citizen. My bins are fine. I don't know that I've ever had to have them replaced. At the end of the day, we sit up here in an effort to try to make the best decisions for the, the citizens of the community. I, I don't disrespect previous leadership and previous staff for doing what they did. They thought it was the best thing. This is the best thing that I believe right now. I'm strongly in favor of, of these amendments, and I appreciate the fact that Recology was able to sit down with us and, and talk about making some of those amendments in the best interest of a good contract that's fair to both parties. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Comment? Yes, ma'am.
Through the mayor, I, I would like to add and support what Councilman Shaw and Boom Garden just stated. As I have been learning about regional waste management and the complexities of this, our staff has been diligent in giving us the proper information and guidance of how to make these decisions. And with that, we have worked closely, you know, with our attorney, and there are changes in the state law that have taken effect that perhaps that hadn't been taken into consideration. I think what is important also, that we are now part of this regional management, so we're more consistent across the region. We kept hearing, within the discussions, the inconsistencies, the things that were not being done prior to reviewing this matter. And I think that as a consumer, I have to give a very small example of Recology's attention to customer service, is that I was taking out my recyclable bin, which I have the real big one, and I usually, it takes me several weeks to fill it up because I don't have a lot of recyclable bin items. And so it was very, it was broken on the side, there was just, it was like, you know, half a wheel practically working, not working. I never called Recology and said, hey, I would like to have a new bin. I pulled up in my driveway, and there's a truck out there in front of my house, and they're saying, um, hi. And I'm like, whoa, we're Recology, we're giving you a new bin because we noticed that your other bin was in despair and not working. So without even myself calling, they take that kind of attention to take care of our community. And so with the idea of each customer having the opportunity to decide the size of their own cart is really a good thing. And in long term, it actually, I think, may have some reduction in waste that hasn't really truly been considered. So I'm in full support of what we're doing, and I appreciate the nice compliments from, it is difficult to be in this position, but it's very gratifying, gratifying when you're doing it with integrity, honesty, and transparency.
All right, through the mayor. I'm going to make it short and sweet. I agree with the, what the council has said, make the decisions part of a team, and I think as a team, we're making the right decision. And I want to thank Recology and our staff for working together and taking care of this problem because it was a issue that came up that could have been a much greater issue than, that was taken, we took care of it, and it is a cost savings for our community. In the long run, it's going to be a savings for all the citizens in our community, and we're all together on one team. We all have, all five jurisdictions is one. And I just want to just comment on that, and that's it for my comments for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My two cents simply is echoing what my colleagues up here have said. I, I fully support the, the amended agreement. I, I really thank Recology as a member of the subcommittee, that what they bring to the table, the attitude they brought to the table, the professionalism, the information. And we had hours of discussion, questions back and forth over- And we had, um, hours of discussion, questions back and forth, um, over the course of months. Of course, this, this agreement or this conversation's been going on since we were running, initially running for office, a long time ago, years ago. We've gotten to the point now where I agree with John, enough is enough. We need to make a decision and move forward as a community. We, I guarantee, we maybe, uh, we, we know, we're not necessarily perfect, we never claimed to be that, however, I guarantee the decisions were made, were in the best interest of everybody involved. Bumper to bumper, the entire community, I'm happy to be a part and align with RWMA again. The, the notion of changing the trucks just for the sake of changing the trucks, I thought, I, I still think that's absurd. It's a garbage truck. They have a bit, they have a contract to live up to. It's their responsibility and their job to replace it as they see fit. We don't, we don't need to meddle in that. The same thing with cart sizes. Now, we have the option again. I think that's relevant for, as a customer, I don't want a ninety-six gallon. It's me and a Chihuahua. I don't need a ninety-six gallon carp, for crying out loud. But, uh, and then replacing them and the whole bit, right? So, let's, let's give it a little bit of options for, for the community and for our customers. Bio solids is an issue that came up, I agree with Mark, and that it was kicked down the road, and I think possibly even intentionally ignored or left outside of the agreement. Now that we've integrated into the whole thing, and again, Recology, thank you very much, they don't have to, but they agreed to ramp it up slowly and slowly integrate the, the cost increases, and they're absorbing that while we, while, while they're giving us a break. That's just one thing that goes with relationship professionalism and the bigger picture that they have in mind as well, and I appreciate that. Again, laws, laws change with recycling. The idea, someone can, the word is complex. I tell you what, that is an understatement when it comes to this. Is every move you make creates more here. It's like a balloon when you're pushing on it, right? How do you, how do you package it up? They still have business to do. They're a for-profit company. Yes, that's true. I have no problem with that at all. They're being reasonable, and we understand that. The service they provide is, uh, is good. Grace brought up an, an example of the customer service they provide, and we could go on and on. Probably all of us have a story about Recology, where they take care of their customers, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the opinions that were contrary to the, the motion we're probably going to be taking today. Everybody has their right to say so. Everybody has a right to feel the way they do. But, uh, I will stand firm, and when you, when your principles are true, and you come from a pure place, decision-making is that much easier. And, uh, this contract, after going over it and over it and modifying it and questioning back and forth, I'm confident that this is the right thing for our community, and I plan on voting in favor of it. Thank you. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Through the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the twenty-nineteen collective's, uh, collection services franchise agreement with Recology Yuba Sutter.
And I'll second that.
A motion to, uh, approve staff's recommendation, authorize me to execute the amendment with the Recology for twenty-nineteen. Will be, all those in favor, please?
Aye.
Opposed? None. There we go. Done deal. Finally.
There we go.
Moving on to number eighteen, wastewater collection capital acquisition purchases.
Tim, I, I've been waiting for your presentation, truthfully.
I'm ready.
Okay? 'Cause I know you're gonna do a great job.
I'm gonna try.
No, you, you will.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Tim Bybee.
You can wait. You can wait. Yes.
Oh, so, you guys don't wanna hear the rest?
Okay, Mr. Bybee, the floor is yours.
You want me to wait for Sean?
No. He can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Tim Bybee, the wastewater collection supervisor. I'm coming to you tonight with a couple capital acquisitions that I feel are of great importance for the sewer collections department. Both of these items are proprietary and unique in design and are the leading edge in technology. The Titus Twister is the first one. The Titus Twister is a fats, oils, and grease device. The unit is, is, the unit is used to fight fog buildup as well as odor and corrosion. In two thousand and eighteen, we installed a similar unit at lift station number ten that uses a water vapor and ozone instead of air and ozone like the Titus Twister does. On July first, we installed a demo trailer at lift station number two on Market Street. This station has upwards of three million gallons of wastewater that runs through it daily. When you look at the photos, you can see the clear difference of the buildup. On the left side, this is two hours after we cleaned the lift station. We typically take off anywhere between eight and twelve inches of fog every Monday morning. So, we, every Monday, we, we go out there, so four times a month. After we installed the, done the installation, one hour after installation, you can see the, the liquid, how much clearer it is, and the fog is completely gone. Um, we've had the, we've had the unit there for about almost two months, and we've had to clean it one time. So, there will still be some maintenance to do, but we will cut it from fifty-two weeks a year, we're hoping down to eight to twelve. Through the years, the collections crew has had an enormous amount of odor complaints and ongoing weekly maintenance. Our current system is a synthetic charcoal blend that is very ineffective. The collections crew has tried to manage the odors by performing weekly maintenance, maintenance, which entails a vac-on truck, three maintenance workers, and a service truck. This typically takes three to four hours. We feel that sixty-five thousand dollars is a conservative number for maintenance and charcoal replacement. I am recommending the purchase of the Titus Twister to resolve ongoing odor and fog issues that will come with a long-term cost savings. The second item is the SL RAT. By no means does this unit replace jetting or CCTV. This SL RAT, the SL RAT uses an acoustic sound wave that detects the open amount of area inside of a pipe. This will give it a rating between zero and ten, zero being the worst, ten being the best. Our aging infrastructure is always a concern with continuous jetting. With, with continuous jetting habits. We have multiple backlot sewer mains that are concrete in nature and very thin-walled. On May fifteenth, Duke's Route Control provided us with a demo in three of our sewer mains that we have had root intrusion with in the past. After they did the demo, the results came back as a rating of two pipes with a four and one pipe with a seven. We stuck our video camera in to confirm why they were at a four. We quickly confirmed that the roots were growing back through the joints through the pipe. Once we washed the pipe, we stuck the SL RAT back on to, on to, to see what they came back as. They typically were at a four. And they, they were quickly rated at a seven. After extensive research, research and conversation with other agencies that currently use the SL RAT, we feel this tool would have significant value for the sewer collections crew. The fiscal impacts would be a hundred thousand dollars from the wastewater collections equipment, seventy thousand dollars for the fats, oil, and grease control device, thirty thousand for acoustic pipe inspection equipment. Supplemental appropriation to operation, operating budget is required to track capital acquisitions lifespan. My recommendation is to approve items A through D. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anybody a member of the public care to comment? Nothing? All right, bring it back to council. No comment?
I, I, my comment is that you did very well, what I got to see. And it's interesting, the actual equipment that, this is very, um, state-of-the-art type of equipment, right?
Yes.
So, um, how many people are gonna be trained to utilize this equipment?
It's, it's very, uh, user-friendly, so the whole crew would be trained to use it. And we could actually use it on, you know, an on-call deal if we had somebody that was called out and somebody was complaining about a sewer plug. We could put it in there and tell them, "Our pipe is clear."
And so, it reduces that process severely from those fifty-two to, what did you say, eight?
We're hoping eight to twelve, uh, weeks a year, or eight to twelve times a year.
Yeah, that's great. That's a really good, um, good investment. Thank you.
My only, my only comment, good job, Tim. My only comment is, I, I was reading this, uh, the staff report and things earlier today, like I do every day before a meeting. And it occurred to me that when I had my conversation with our interim city manager, that she referred to these two items as exciting and fun. So, I, I, I love that. We have the right person and the right job, if she can find that exciting and fun. I love that.
No, no, through the mayor.
Thank you.
I worked with Tim for ten years, well, and...
And you survived, Tim?
Oh, it was tough.
All right, man. Good job.
And, you know, and we, we dealt with it, and, uh, this is, it's gonna be very much, it's gonna be very time-consuming, or not time, it's gonna save lots of hours of time where they can go out and do other things. Instead of them doing, you know, four hours, four to five hours every Monday, fifty-two weeks a year, uh, now they can do other things and, and make our system, since, you know, state-of-the-art, since we have the state-of-the-art technology in the last five years, uh, our sewer, uh, backups have been down to nearly nothing. And back in the day, we had a hundred a year on the average. So, yeah, so state-of-the-art technology, uh, the city's taken very good care of, of the staff. We got the proper, uh, tools and trucks, and I'm very impressed as what the city's done in the last, well, it's been the last ten years, then, but the last five years, we've got state-of-the-art technology, and it makes us much better.
Yeah, makes our jobs actually, I'm not gonna say fun, but they are fun.
And exciting.
And exciting, definitely. I, I would definitely encourage each and every one of you, if you get the opportunity, to definitely come out and see our operation.
Very well.
Yep. And they do pass out masks.
Hope so. Um, we have one member of the public appears would like to speak, or, Mr. Shaw, would you care to?
I'll keep mine really brief. Mr. Mayor, uh, first of all, I just wanna say thanks, good presentation, but one thing I thought that was really notable about this, 'cause you guys do a great job. I've ran into the crews on the street and, and talked to them and such, but with my conversations with our, uh, city manager, uh, anyway, this, this is, just seems to all be going down the toilet here, but, uh, uh, that was my funny. Uh, I know, boo. Anyway, no, one thing that was noted, while this seemed like is a, uh, as a, uh, a, a big expenditure, uh, that one sonar acoustic-type piece of equipment can actually keep us from having to dig up the street because of sending the jets down through a pipe that is damaged and then collapsed, and then you have to go dig up the streets. So, it's gonna actually save us a lot of money in the long term and keep our streets. Well, they won't get any worse, okay?
Very good. Welcome, Phil. You have three minutes.
Oh, I, I'd be much less than three minutes. I'd like to give, I'd like to give some of my minutes away if somebody would like them.
That's okay.
I would like to ask, is it possible that we people on septic tanks can, can hook in with these people and find out that, you know, you clean out a septic tank and it's a lot of money? I just did it over the weekend. But, uh, to, to be, uh, to take away from the, the good news that you just got, is, is there any way that we can utilize the, uh, knowledge that these people have, uh, for septic tank owners?
In what regard?
Well, you have all the lines that you have to clean out, and you have the, uh, the, the lines that go from the tank itself out and that type of thing.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
And I say, it, it might, they're doing a lot of good things with water now, so, um, you came too late for me, but thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. All right. Time for a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make, uh, motion for the wastewater collections capital, uh, purchases, recommendation, uh, uh, recommendation A, B, C, and D. We'll just make it easy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. Move on, almost done. Number nineteen, appointments to Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation and the Board of Directors and, excuse me, Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors and their executive committee. This is part of our attempt to expand and, um, our economic development program and policies here in the city. As a part of that, joining the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, they asked that we appoint at least one member of the council to their board of directors, and Councilmember Espendola has graciously stepped up to volunteer for that. Executive committee, I've made the decision to appoint our new city manager, Mr. Michael Rock, upon his arrival in Yuba City. So, that will be his welcome gift from us. One of the many. Yes. Would anybody from the public care to comment on that decision? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, uh, move to approve the appointment of Councilmember Grace Espendola to serve as the city Yuba City representative on the YSEDC Board of Directors and new city manager, Michael Rock, to serve on the executive committee.
Very good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Very good. On to city council reports, beginning with Councilmember Boom Garden.
Okay. Just gonna hit the highlights. We've been, we've been off for a few weeks. All of us have been involved with ongoing negotiations with our very valued city staff. They, they seem to be progressing reasonably well, and hopefully, we can continue with that. It does, uh, it does take a bit of time, and, and it's important work. Attended a Sutter Surgical Hospital reveal, if you will, of a robotic orthopedic, uh, device. The reason I bring it up is, this is a much, much needed and valued piece of equipment in our community. And interestingly enough, uh, they got it before Stanford got it. So, this is kind of a, a, a piece of, uh, of trivia, if you will, about Yuba Sutter and some of the, sometimes we're forward, sometimes we're out of the game. Attended the senior center open, open house, and the reason I bring that up is, you know, you talk about people who are excited and fun about what they, what they're doing, or excited and having fun with what they're doing, is the folks down there at the senior center truly care about what's going on, and, and it was, it was a, a nice event, and they had quite a crowd as well. I haven't made waffle Wednesdays yet, but, you know, maybe one of these days. Well, Manny's cooking, so that's a little bit concerning to me. The street bridge, uh, opening, I believe, occurred, uh, while we were, uh, away from meetings. Obviously, looking forward to that as that project continues. National night out, what a treat it was to go ride along. I chose to ride with the fire department, go figure, um, uh, to visit with, uh, all the, I don't know how many, there was probably thirteen, seventeen?
Well, there was twelve.
Yeah, there was a lot of places to go and, um, a lot of good people out there, a lot of opportunity to interact with the public, and you know what? That's very valuable. Listening to the folks we serve is huge, and that's a great opportunity, and I look forward to doing that. We had our second homeless workshop, um, and again, uh, I'm sure, um, that, you know, we continue to plod along in that effort, uh, in trying to figure out, along with the rest of the country, how best to deal with this very complex problem. But I, there are some fixes in the mix. Attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, uh, as a member, along with Mayor Harris. That agency's, uh, engaged in some very, uh, meaningful projects, uh, north of us and south of us. They're tying up some things. But, you know, you look at, at the opportunity and the safety that that group has presented to us, uh, as residents of this community, and it's really good work. Finally, uh, getting ready to engage, um, in the master tax exchange agreement with Sutter County. This is gonna be hugely important to the future of this city. Looking forward to getting going with that. We're having some meetings as we speak, um, to get, to get as much information, uh, going forward before we start to meet with the county, but, uh, I'm looking forward to a very collaborative and, and positive, uh, interaction with our counterparts from Sutter County. Other than that, that's it. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. I think that, uh, you know, this is Diana's last meeting, and there'll be all kinds of stuff going on, on the third, but, uh, once again, um, I'm gonna take opportunity now just to tell you, thank you, and I very, I very much value, um, your patience with lots of questions. Some of these issues that we've had to deal with, uh, much like Recology and many others are complex. You're a rock, okay? And I know that's not always easy, 'cause you have five different people you're hurting around here, but I really appreciate what you've done for us during, during this time, and especially the first eight, eight months or so of my, uh, my seat on the council. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Espendola.
I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about some of the newer things that, um, expanding into the work as a city council member, and that is on economic development and workforce. Extremely, um, excited about joining the EDC, um, board, and, um... And um, thankful for, for being appointed to that, so I really appreciate that. One of the things about that particular board is that I attended a economic development, uh, Greater Sacramento Economic Development Task Force. And there was um, about fifty people from the region that attended this one particular uh, meeting. And one of the areas that was really interesting was on um, and economic and planning systems. So um, Councilwoman Boomgarden just mentioned about the master tax. One other item that we're gonna be working on is impact fees. And so in this particular um, workshop, uh, the company that did this was EPS, which the Economic Planning System. And they were talking about the process of studying in our region of infrastructure cost burdens in the community. So meaning, how will this, the study that they're producing and the study that we're doing. Where are there areas that we might want to consider as a council in reviewing our future impact fees? So that's one area that um, I was able to learn from um, here in the last week. The other is um, I attended the Yuba Sutter Fair and that was so much fun. We had the opportunity to communicate and connect with family, um, friends. And one of my favorite day was actually the family day and the first responder appreciation day. And that was on Sunday. The last item that I wanted to talk about was um, homeless workshop. So we had the Board of Supervisors and the city council, we all came together as uh, Councilwoman Boomgarden mentioned. And it was a really um, informative, productive meeting and thanks to um, Brad McIntyre for pulling us all together into this one meeting. So what came out of that meeting is an ad hoc, another committee. Yeah, oh yay, right? And so um, I volunteered to be on that particular committee. Because it is one of those areas that I'm committed to try to help find solutions. And so in that, um, hopefully I'll have more to offer in the future about what other um, possibilities will happen here in our community. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep mine brief. Um, I'm along with uh, Councilmember Boomgarden on the uh, Bog Stewart Master Tax Agreement. Will be firing up, uh, I believe our first meeting with the county is coming up uh, early September, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the sad part there is, we've been appointed since like May and we've been waiting on the county, so we're, we're ready to rock and roll there. Uh, one of the highlights that I uh, got to do uh, along with Councilmember Boomgarden uh, was, you saw an article in the paper a few weeks ago about a Mr. Carl Sanders. And the city was able to recognize him for what he did uh, in uh, stopping a perpetrator that morning uh, out in his uh, neighbor's yard. So uh, uh, you know, he's, he's a gentleman. It was my honor to uh, say thank you, recognize him, because I said, I said that night, I could just imagine. Being my wife or my daughter in that type of situation. That, he's a good neighbor, so uh, we don't condone going and doing that, but he really stepped up. Uh, I sat on uh, Yuba Sutter Transit. There's a couple of notable things there. Uh, number one, uh, they've been upgrading all the buses and they've implemented a new app. And uh, if you're on the transit system, you can actually track the buses and your bus stop and location. It's kind of like. You know, you, you know, your bus is actually two minutes away, three minutes away, running late. Uh, so that's going to help people that are commuting, especially down through Sacramento region. Uh, cause there was a lot of things going on down there with delays because of things downtown Sacramento. The other most notable thing with Transit uh, was uh, there was a uh, item addressed from the uh, Yuba County Grand Jury. That came back to Transit about a um, potential bus stop out near Lindhurst High School and stuff, needing one and whatnot. But Transit has sent a response back to them on that particular item. Uh, it's simply just, A, it's not feasible. And B, there was a couple of things they didn't take into consideration. So um, that was something that came to Transit and then they reported back. Because it was actually a lot closer to the schools than, than they thought through a back gate there. The mayor and myself has been holding uh, the PERS workshop. We've held two. Um, they're going quite well. Uh, I encourage anyone to come and learn. We've got four more to go. We're building to see by December if we can find any new viable solutions to what's going on in PERS. And it's just quite the education process through. Uh, it is a very safe environment for everyone, employees, citizens. We're not here to point figures, fingers. We're here to learn and try to see if we can find solutions. And um, uh, we had Laura Nichols here uh, from Senator Jim Nielsen's office and she took our concerns back and she's going to be walking through. And hopefully December, we come out with some good ideas there. Again, National Night Out happened and I'll leave on, uh, almost leave on that note. I think I was the only one. I played basketball with the kids, so I had fun. I liked that night. It was fun. Next year I will be bringing my own basketball though. Um, and uh, cause at first they didn't wanna give me the basketball. So, but uh, uh, the last thing I will close on is uh, Ms. Langley. Mark said it well and I will just. Paint a picture of you that you are a master cat herder and there's five cats up here. Good job.
Okay, uh. How I'm gonna start this. We've done a lot of things in the last month, so I'm just gonna thank everybody for inviting us to all these occasions. It's great to meet people in the public, have fun. I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. Uh, of course, we had Waffle Wednesdays. Always nice seeing the seniors on the last Wednesday of the month. Uh, it's great. Uh, it's a fun time. Uh, the mayor and myself, we did ribbon cutting for the Highway twenty uh, new improvements. I'll let the mayor uh, talk a little about that. He was the guest speaker, one of the guest speakers of that here a few days ago. National Night Out, wonderful, great time. Get to meet, uh, there was twelve locations. I got eleven out of twelve. I was heading to City Hall and they said it was done and come to find out, I could've made it uh, hit the twelfth one, make all twelve, but it was a great night out. Got to see the people, lot of food, so fun time there. Uh, and then on closing, um, I just wanna speak on it. Uh, the next three days down in Marysville Riverfront Park, it's gonna be the vet stand down, veteran stand down. Uh, that is a great opportunity. If you please tell everybody that's not here. Every single veterans organization will be down there. You will be able to be taken care of in every single possible place. It's all gonna be in one spot. And I have the, this will be my fourth year. I am the uh, the greeter. So I'm gonna be shaking hands with eight hundred to a thousand folks walking through the door. And then I give them a little gift basket and send them on their way, tell them the directions and where they need to go. They have to go to seven locations and once they get seven, uh, they get to go and get commissary. And a lot of them, that's the only stuff they get once a year, is the commissary there. So it's a great day. Please tell everybody, you know, it's for anybody and everybody, a veteran, uh, National Guard, whatever, please come down. It's for the community and it's getting bigger and better every year and I'm very happy to volunteer and, and be at that. And also Diana, thank you very much. It's been a fun four months. Huh? It's been longer than that? Oh, I tried. Anyway, thank you Diana for your time. Thank you very much. And that's it for me.
Very good. Some of the unique things or different things, we've, we've all attended, especially skipping accounts, I mean, we've all attended many, many events. And I, it's uh, kinda mind-boggling sometimes, but it's always fun. The uh, S A C O G is a, is a member of the Board of Directors for that organization. I had the opportunity to host uh, their executive director and a gentleman. Chris Zimmerman from, I don't recall the name of his organization, but he's from back east, who specializes in revitalizing. Not necessarily suburban, but in neighborhoods that are on kind of uh, the fringe of a city, that have kind of like dropped economically. But he can go in there and, and offer recommendations to that and he had some very good recommendations. We ho, we hosted them along with staff, went on a uh, tour of Yuba City. We focused primarily on the Bridge Street Corridor, went to Carriage Square, went to um, the Bridge, uh, Fifth Street Bridge area. And a few other things and they really provided some good insight and good information. I had a board meeting the very next day and he did a very detailed presentation to the entire board. Right now, it's essentially taking this professional who's been proven um, for years and years in the business, kinda kicking the tires, if you will. And gonna give us some, starting the conversation, providing some ideas for us, how we can kinda leverage that opportunity in our neighborhood. The Joint Homeless Workshop, of course, is continuing, that, that conversation. I don't know if we can come up with solutions, but maybe we can come up with some approaches um, locally. Um, ideally a solution, but we definitely have uh, more work to do. But there are a lot of people that I think. Well, I should say that I often still hear that nobody is doing anything with regard to the homeless. So I guarantee you, there's a lot of people doing a lot of stuff with, just not necessarily the most conspicuous things. Because as soon as, we're not done until we can drive down Second Street and not see a motor home or, or, or a camp, right? So we still have work to do, but there are many, many success stories. Um, we just don't necessarily know them, because we don't notice them, because they're not homeless anymore. I did volunteer and I went through the training to be a mentor for homeless people. That was uh, it's just a two hour thing. They're gonna assign me a homeless person or perhaps even a family, I'm not quite sure. That you help provide them guidance and support as they navigate through the process to get their, get them back on their feet. So I haven't started yet, but they, they tell me they have somebody waiting in the wings for me. Just need to make sure schedules coordinate. So um, the PERS meetings and then community workshops, if you will, that we've been holding, I think successful. I think um, also eye-opening for some people. Uh, rallying and circling the wagons is not necessarily an answer. I think uh, perhaps some um, assumptions were made that that's all it's gonna take. Well, it's gonna, it's working out to be an educational experience for a lot of folks, give them a background. Um, not only how we got there, but what, what, what is our current situation and that will provide fuel for thought, for hopefully some suggestions. Our goal is to get something. We're not necessarily here going to be able to have an answer, hopefully we will. But our goal is to get some type of recommendation or sometimes a uni, a unified thought that we can send forward to Sacramento, perhaps even as a, as a region. Uh, have a bigger voice. That's our goal there. Um, but I do encourage anybody and everybody to attend that. Been speaking um, semi-regular with our incoming city manager, Michael Rock. He's, he remains excited. I understand he moved into town this last weekend. So that'd be good. The Highway twen, uh, twenty groundbreaking out there, we had that out there just past uh, Acacia. There's a five, I think it's a six mile stretch of Highway twenty that they're um, refurbishing to include replacement of a, a bridge over the Wadsworth Canal, which is literally a hundred years old. So bottom line is, it's making it um, the roadway more viable and primarily safer. We do have a lot of commuters go that direction. I was one of them for several years. And I tell you, any, any type, you can do that, especially a wide shoulder. And I know the CHP appreciates we're widening the shoulders, cause that's their office right there, every, every shoulder. And so it's gonna be a good thing. A lot of work, millions of dollars at work and a lot of planning went into the initial, before we got to turn the shovel over. But it was a pleasure to be a part of that and thank you um, Vice Mayor for attending. Thank you also for attending, wearing a coat and tie and not sweating to death. It was pretty rough. Um, we had the Community Resource Fair on Saturday, which was very nice. It was, it was the biggest attendance I think we've ever had, over seventy-something. Not vendors, but um, agencies or um. Seventy-two, over seventy. I got it right. Thank you. Attended and um, it was, it's really good. It's a really positive vibe. Of course, they bade everybody to come with free food, which is great. It always works. But I also, we also had a booth there, uh, the city, it was my part of uh, the Meet the Mayor events. I try to, try to do at least semi-regular. To connect with the public and uh, uh, success there as well. Met a lot of ni, nice people. And I, he's not here right now, but um, George uh, coordinated that, which I appreciate. For Beal Military Liaison and that, and that committee, we, I went, attended a change of command ceremony out there, not of the entire base, but of what they call the RINOs, which is the Civil Engineering Squadron. Who was very, we talk about a diverse group. He has everything from streets and sewer up all the way to the fire department, is what he was the commander of. And uh, we changed that um, commander there. I look forward to spending some time with our new commander. Also, as part of my membership to Beal, I'll travel to Washington DC this month, perhaps, no, it's in September. We're going to partner up with other representatives from Beal, other electeds locally and from Travis Air Force Base to advocate on behalf of not only the Air Force, but specifically Beal and Travis. Um, California, for whatever reason, is perceived to be not friendly to the military. We're trying to convince them otherwise. We, Beal is such a valuable asset to our community, tens and tens of hundreds of millions of dollars that they bring to our community. And we need to put light on that for our legislators. Other, let's face it, missions mean money. And so other bases nationwide are competing for, excuse me, things that Beal does. Want to take that away from Beal and put it in their state. So of course, we don't wanna do that. We wanna make sure that we highlight um, Beal is a great place and we fully support that. So that's gonna be our mission. It's a, a quick trip. I think it's two or three nights. Uh, Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Boomgarden and Shaw for being a part of that. Um, we're looking forward to getting those conversations going, that's for sure. Yuba Sutter Arts, I'm on that board and the, the, this meeting um, this month primarily consisted of appointing new um, president, vice president and whatnot. But they are constantly, if you see the painted uh, utility boxes around town, that's a result of what they're doing, among many, many other things, poetry and you name it. They're really, um, Abby and Dave are, really do a good job out there. Senior Center Ground Opening, I got to an opportunity to lose a game of bingo, which is still great. It's not, not surprising that that happened. Their waffles are pretty good too, even though Manny cooked them. Subufka, as stated, uh, we um, that organization is very, very active, very, very good. A lot of the stuff is tidying up on the, on their west levee. Now we're looking at hopefully transitioning to um, protecting our flank down there on the um, bypass. Looking into some options on that. Um, if anybody, I may have mentioned this, but if anybody ever, if you're interested in how we got where we are in Subufka and L D one and L B, L D nine, how come there's not a two through eight? But there's a lot of history there and there's this book, is it Taming the Inland Sea? Or some, do you, something like that. If anybody ever thinks about that, I'm, I'm not all the way done reading. You talk about something that's interesting. They talk about early California, the gold mine, all the hydraulic mining and how active and how, I always thought it was down in Jackson and Columbia area there, west of Sacramento. But I tell you, so much gold rush, gold country activity was right here in our backyard. It's really interesting to read about that. And see some of the old photographs and see here, you, names like Olier and, and, and Parks, from Parks Bar and all these other things, all these last names of these people. You never wonder, you always wonder where it came from. It's, they're in this book and it's about eighteen sixty's, seventy's and eighty's. Very interesting, recommend it. National Night Out, of course, was, it's always fun. Um, a great purpose, great community event. I, I, I planted myself right here at the City Hall. Cause it's the first time we've ever had, hosted an event and I think the uh, the attendance was outstanding. A lot of work went into that. Again, George worked on that for us and um, I tell you, there's a lot of people there and having, having a good time. So I appreciated that. I have a lot more I could say, but I would also like to end on with a thank you to uh, our interim city manager Diana Langley. You, you really stepped up Diana. I can't, I don't think it's even possible to overstate how um, happy and confident and supportive and appreciative that we are. I know I am, but um, thank you very much. It's, I, thank you isn't it, is it enough? But thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity and I had a huge support team there between the directors, administration, Ben, public work staff, Shannon. And so it was, it was a team effort of, you know, a, a lot of people that assisted with this, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely um, a team effort, which makes it so nice as their leader and whatnot. It's, it's really good feeling to know that. Support system is incredible and uh, I recognize that as well. Did you have something?
I just, I didn't get a chance to say thank you to you as well and I really appreciate that. You've um, given such insight and a lot of good advice and I've taken that all the time and I will continue looking for you throughout the building. You know you haven't left the building. So um, I really appreciate everything you've done for our community. People do not even know half of what you've been able to do for this community and it's, that's what gives me more pride than the fact that you just worked for, with me and others. So thank you.
There's six people here.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you.
All right, we're done. Thank you very much.